Six oh two, so I believe we'll bring this Hermosa Town Board meeting Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to order at six oh two. The attorney is gonna be late, so we might, um, I think we probably will jump around a little bit, so he's here when he needs to be. But first we'll do the roll call. Hendrickson?
Here.
Welcome back. Kramer's here. Ferguson?
Here.
Coop?
Here.
And Harris is on her way. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We appreciate your attendance. Do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, call for changes. A review of the current agenda items. Uh, we will be changing several items. Under engineer, we have C, the letter from Department of Public Safety and Emergency Management. Under eight, we have an addition to the claims, uh, from Kent Haig, an invoice. Under twelve, finance officer, we have a D for setting the budget meetings. Uh, fourteen. We're not, we're actually, we're not changing that one. That was, a lot of people called and asked for a change of that, so. And then, um, like I said, I would like permission to...
I also have a change under planning and zoning, seven C. It's supposed to be twenty twenty-four twenty-eight, not twenty twenty-four twenty-six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. That's because you got a new one up here. She reprinted it. The one you had at home was probably the twenty-sixth, so. All right. And also then I would like permission just to move things around a little if we need to, because there are certain items that the attorney would need to be here for and others that it's not quite as important for. Did I have a motion in that effect, please?
I'll make that.
Vicki makes a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, Cal, beat ya. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Meeting protocol, classroom style. Please speak up when you are, when it is your turn to speak, raise your hand, I will call on you. Other than that, everything, everybody kinda knows. Be nice. Four, consent calendar. So the approval of the July second, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
I make a motion, we accept the July twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
Second, I wasn't, say here.
No.
No, I abstain.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Cal. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Conflict of interest, I just expect anybody that has one to, uh, bring, tell us when we're at that subject and, uh, trust everybody's honesty. Yes, Vicki?
What about when there's a conflict of interest that, I feel there's a conflict of interest for you to be discussing abatements, et cetera, since you have abatements listed and have not adhered to them, to me, I find that a conflict of interest for you to not declare that.
We have gone through that.
Not when I was a attorney.
Okay.
And it wasn't summarized in the minutes.
Okay. That was taken care of. We have sent letters to all the people on your list. Jill, did everybody get sent the letters?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, we are moving forward past that.
So in other words?
We're chang, we've got it written that we are going through the ordinance, we will be going through the ordinance and changing some things. And until that time, we are doing, um, uh, anything that's dangerous. The lilacs are deemed not dangerous.
I'm assuming, yeah. My whole thing comes down to, um, because you were on that list, it should be that you will have a conflict of interest. If I were on that list, I would say, I have been listed on that list, therefore, at this point, I have to declare a conflict of interest, just to bring it to your attention, so that the, everybody is aware that you are listed on it.
I have talked about it at each meeting that I was on that list, in front of the public, in the recorder.
Is that not a conflict of interest, though?
I guess that kinda depends, Vicki.
Yeah. That's what I figured. Okay, thank you.
Joan?
I think that's a good question for the attorney.
Mm-hmm, it is.
I think we already asked him, but we can ask him again.
Oh, I will.
Kathy, you had your end up?
Yeah, I did. It's like, um, I don't understand how you can have, you're not in compliance with an ordinance, but then you can just change it. That, that's not right.
I, I put in an appeal. The pro, the process was not done properly, and that was my appeal. And that was, um, I think we had, Jill, was there eight other appeals? Somewhere in that neck of the woods?
Yes.
So.
Right.
That is how that discussion came out. The appeal, the process was not done properly, and so it kinda makes those null and void because they were not done properly.
What do you mean, they weren't written up, or what?
The, the order in which the process was followed, was followed, was not correct.
It was in step one, and it said mail the letter. What more do you want? The complaint was there, the ask to get it done, the ordinance number was there, and then when it would be revisited. What more do you want in the letter?
Thank you for raising your hand. Mrs. Pillen?
I have a question.
That's happened too.
Do, are you still taking the meter readings?
I am.
How can you do that when you're the president of the, of the board?
Because this is a third-class municipality, ma'am. With it being a third-class municipality, we have way less, uh, regulations through the state, because they know that in a small town, there just isn't the amount of people to do everything the way a second and first-class municipality can.
Yeah, but there's a lot of people in this town that would probably do that if, if you ask, I mean, you know.
Well...
There's people that, I mean, you know, it's only, it seems like there's just certain ones in this town, since I've lived here, that do certain things, is all, you know.
In the past, they have asked for other people to do it, and nobody has been willing.
But that was in the...
And that was in the past. You're correct. Donna, go ahead.
I have a question on this one. Mr. Chuck Ferguson, Manningley meeting. What does that mean? Request appeal process to be followed is June eleventh. What does that mean?
Uh, I have to, show me where you're at here.
Put it down here at the bottom.
Oh, this is the old one. This is the old list?
The old list is on the top. I, I...
Why do I have the new one on top?
I don't, I don't know, but the new one is right here. That is another one that is...
But, okay, so you threw away everything else, but how come that's still on your pending?
Is it on the new sheet?
Seven sixteen.
It's on the old sheet. But the, the seven sixteen at the top is just the latest date that it's at the meeting today. But if you look at the notice dates, that's how old those are.
Thank you, Jill.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I don't know, I didn't write it up, so I don't know what it means. I'd have to dig it out and find it.
Well, it says it's pending, so I wanna know what that means.
Five other people that have spoken, and I have my end up.
Got that? All right, Vicki?
So I count at least eight violations that had been written up were addressed correctly, and they are removed, but nothing is resolved. So how can that be?
Okay. This...
Can I say something?
Yes, Jill.
In the ordinance, the complaints, ninety-one point ten, is the complaints, that's not the abatement procedure. In there, it says, should any member of the town board receive a written or verbal complaint, a trustee on the board shall in two days investigate the complaint and make immediate determination of required action, and so notify both the plaintiff and the owner of the determination. The complaint shall be required before any courtesy notice or abatement action shall be initiated and shall be anonymous. Should the complaint be declared valid, the town board of trustees, upon majority vote, may give the violating owner a courtesy notice of the violation of the first offense. So was, did the board vote that it was valid on majority vote? And I think Terry and I did talk about this, correct, Terry?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, so before we go any further on this, we're gonna wait until the attorney is here. We'll table this until, we'll bring it down into legal. So, uh, abatements under legal, can I have that emotion in a second, in that effect, to change that process?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Cal.
What are you making a motion on?
To change the agenda so that that particular portion of which we're speaking, the abatements, the old abatements, are under legal.
I'll second it.
I'll separate it.
Hello, Shannon, and thank you, Shannon.
Sorry I'm late.
Glad you could be here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us right to the engineer. Anthony, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a pleasure hearing this. So, um, so the first item on the agenda is the water worth billing, and so, um, I don't know if Terry had a chance to dig this up to reference it in the packet, but, um, we had an agreement, um, when we initially had proposed the account plan, TIF, and rate methodology, we kinda tabled the first two of those three items, and then we approved the third.
Okay.
That third was the rate methodology, so, or rate management. So that's, um, because it's, uh, it was a long sum of fifty-five hundred dollars, and, the, you know, the, it's, it's basically, our, our accounting is putting ten percent on that just to pass it through, finish, right? So I felt it would be better to just pass that savings on to the town and let you pay directly to software company the five thousand. So that's where that billing comes from. So basically, it's replacing my contract for the fifty-five hundred with, uh, this contract directly with the software company for five thousand. You still get the same service and everything.
Yeah, sorry. So what I had in the, in the packet was the motion that where we approved the fifty-five hundred inner contract, and I just, I didn't have to include the contacts. Included the bill and then the, the minutes that showed that we approved that fifty-five hundred payment.
I just thought it was, made more sense to pass the savings on to the town, not have to run it through our accounting for, or our...
Motion that to cancel that agreement?
Doesn't she have to raise her hand?
Yeah, you have to raise your hand, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Shannon.
Do we need to make a motion to cancel that agreement, or noted in the minutes, but it's...
I think that was already done.
It was, and my only reason for putting it on the agenda is I had that large bill, and I just, I didn't want you guys to see the five thousand dollar payment and go, what's this for? And just to prove that we had approved it at a prior meeting. That's, that's the only reason I put it on there, just kinda, 'cause it's such a large amount, and we don't normally see those types of bills, so that was...
Okay, Shannon?
Thanks for saving us the money.
Okay. Next?
Next is, um, a letter from Neil. So I thought about bringing a cardboard cutout of Neil, but I couldn't get it together in time. So, uh, he sent a letter, and I'm supposed to read it. So basically, you've probably read the letter, and the gist of it is just that, um, we have a on-call services contract. It's ten thousand dollars annually, um, it renews every Oc, every October fifteenth, and because of the way the original master service agreement was written with us, um, we just sorta honored that, right, because we carried it on. Whatever was left as a balance, we honored that, and then we just continue on as, as we started. So, um, you know, the, the, I guess the, um, plus is, um, you can use it for whatever you want. The, the, could be a minus if you don't use it, because technically we could invoice it, right? And I would say, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that. I would try to like get you to use it up on something useful and not just say, oh, didn't have to do anything, and here's a bill, right? So I wouldn't do that, obviously, so. So the whole, yeah, so the whole thing was, is that you can use it for, um, what you're proposing to do with, with the planning, because, um, you know, Neil is a certified planner, and he's also, you know, got twenty-three years of experience as a professional. He was the, the city planner for twenty-three years for Mitchell, South Dakota, so, um, he retired from there, and now he's with us in the private sector. And so he's got a, a wealth of knowledge in, in planning. He's rewriting your water and sewer ordinances right now, so he's already started that.
Now, believe me, he's just addressing the water meter part of that ordinance right now, is that correct?
Um, yeah, well, you know, the water ordinance, so just to take that as an example, the ordinance, water ordinance in Hermosa is like fifty pages long, and in Rapid City, it's like twenty.
Okay.
So it's pretty heavy-duty, the, the document, right? So, so what Neil, Cal, and I talked about, um, was some, somewhat also refining things as well, so that there's some consistency, 'cause if there's inconsistencies in the ordinance, for example, it calls out many times community standard details. So when a contractor wants to build a house, or homeowner wants to do something, um, it'll say in the ordinance, please refer to the construction details that are for the city, you know, the town of Hermosa. Well, we don't have those. We have nothing to give them, print it out, or send it to them as a template to put in their plans. So we wanna, we wanna make sure that, at least, at least, maybe not rewriting everything, but identifying through the water and sewer ordinances, some kind of glaring discrepancies that could give you issues. So, and then, yeah, there's specific things we are tasked to rewrite in this, between now and October, so, um, but that can continue into next year, you can utilize it for that. I was told that, um, the new, uh, if we were to reinstate P and Z, then we would be having to pay people for their time, right? Compensate them for their time, which is, which is just and fair. But that would amount to two meetings a month, times twelve months, at the rate they were thinking, it'd be like thirty-six hundred dollars, right? And then if a plan needs to come in for review, it'll come in for review anyways to us, like we always do. So like, it'll come to Jill, and then Jill will send it on to us. I'll ask Neil, how much time are you gonna spend on that? Which we pass on as a town to the, to the resident, to the applicant. So it's just kinda in and out. But, so he's already getting paid to review that first thing. So then the next step would be P and Z, where you would then compare it to the ordinance. Well, we're, we're rewriting the ordinance. So it's kind of like, uh, you're trying to fly the plane and build it and design it at the same time. So it's a little bit hard, it's, it's okay for maybe us to do, because we kinda know the intent of the ordinance, 'cause we're rewriting it, right? So that's why Neil wrote this letter saying that you could utilize it, you could utilize thirty-six hundred, I mean, that's actually more than you pay Neil to do that job. So you could save money and devote that towards an extra hour, let's say, of Neil for twice a week, twice a month, and that will basically get you through that, at least that period of time when the ordinances are in flux as they are, like we're trying to...
Sorry, Kent, we'll have a chair...
Well, I'm keeping a warm...
He's getting your salary report, too.
Yeah, I told him I gave your hourly... I don't think that word is... But, uh, but that, that was the suggestion.
Donna had a question first.
So you think, uh, by doing this through your company, it will be a better time, the time fashion will be faster?
Yeah, because the person, like, we already are familiar with each request anyways, 'cause the, the resident is paying for our time to get familiar with it. So now the next step is just to compare it to the ordinance, which, like I said, is in flux until such time, and what we'll try to do is, we'll try to establish, okay, yeah, our ordinance is what it is, um, but this is kind of the, this is the, the standard practice in dealing with that situation. And, you know, that's where Neil will fall back on his experience, and how did they deal with this in Mitchell? 'Cause he wrote, he rewrote all the ordinances in Mitchell. So I guarantee you, in that twenty-three years, there was periods of time where certain parts of the ordinance were in flux, right, where he was still working on them. So you had to, you know, deal with those instances fairly. He told me a story where the town itself had not put sidewalks around a property, and the ordinance said that it needed to have sidewalks, I think he told me this story. And, uh, then the resident came in and said, um, you know, you don't even follow your own ordinance, you know, you don't have this, and you're making me do it. And the council said, you got us, you know, like, we, you're right. And then they said, we gotta be putting all this stuff, we gotta be consistent. So, so that's kinda how we would deal with it. And then obviously, when we get to a point where the ordinances are kinda codified, and they've been reviewed by legal, and now they're kinda, they're kinda the, the ready product, then I think a P and Z would, would, would be able to utilize them. They'd still need some time to get familiar, but then they've got something to work with that isn't so up in the air, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. Any other questions? Shannon, you had your hand up?
Well, I apologize, I'm kinda new to this, but the ten thousand per year, that's like a base amount set aside to use, how is that split up per hour? Like, how much of that, when you say P and Z is thirty-six hundred per year, we're not paying them the extra research hours that they do, it's just the meeting. So I guess in comparison, per hour, what are we eating up for that? And I only ask because our ordinances are codified, and we just went through doing all this ten years ago when I was here. Didn't we pay Ron like twenty, thirty thousand dollars to do those ordinances? It seems like they should, they do need to go through and write that what we don't have.
Yeah, they get stale.
But isn't it mostly, um, amending it rather than...
So usually the way it goes, eh, the right, ideal way, is you start from the top with the master plan or comp plan, and then the comp plan then requires code rewrites.
Have we done the comp plan? Have you done that?
It's up to you later, so...
Okay. I'm just getting caught up. I don't need to end the...
It's gonna kinda, there's two ways, obviously. There's the ideal way, which is you kinda just, you know, rip off the Band-Aid, you, you do the comp plan, and then you do the rewrites, right? And some towns do have that, but like Linda mentioned earlier, you know, a small population town with limited resources, so, you know, that, that is a more significant dollar amount for you than it would be for, you know, Rapid City. So, um, so what, what you do in those instances is you try to identify a, a kind of a roadmap of how you're gonna get there in the same way, but maybe spread out over a couple of years, and then utilize what resources you've already allocated towards that activity.
Right. Back in the day, we had the office staff rewriting from what the board wanted to get it prepared to be reviewed, so that we're spending whatever their salary is per hour versus an engineer's per hour, to at least get it up to the point of reviewing it, so that we're not taking as much of your time. Is that something that can be done to save us money, or is this...
I guess, but...
These are expensive, that's why I'm asking.
Some, some things potentially could, the office staff could help, and maybe like the, the planner could identify those things to help costs, so like, if, but somebody would need to be that one that's the, the, you know, the master ceremonies, right? So without a master ceremonies, you're just sorta, all the horses are pulling in a different direction. But if Neil's saying, well, and I, and I would say this to him, I would say, can you identify things in our, in the, in the town's ordinances that the office staff could help with? Then he will. He'll peel off these sections, and he'll say, could you guys, could you guys try to work on that? And that'll save, that'll maximize the time that you spend with us. And we would do that.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, do you still have a question?
Yeah, um, I guess my feeling is that when there was planning and zoning, it had to go to them, then it had to come to the board, and then it might have to go to an engineer in between. Jill is doing that part, she's reviewing this stuff. If it needs to go to the engineer, it goes to the engineer, but it's a lot quicker process, and it's done by a professional that knows how it's supposed to be done, instead of five people on the board that are laypeople that may or may not know all of the requirements.
Okay. Anybody else? Jill?
Um, I think it sounds like a very economical and good plan to start with.
Good, thank you. Chuck?
Well, one of the things that happens in the process, too, is that before, there was an engineer's staff report, and that wasn't getting done. So consequently, the board hired me to do an initial inspection of the plot plan, the percentage of coverage, and whether or not the setbacks were met, and whether or not there was a river running through it. We had a couple of instances where major granages went through the lock that the engineer never even bothered to look at the lock to see. So that thirty-five dollar pre-inspection goes in hand with Jill's report, so everything is done, I mean, right at the point. She has questions, she asked me, you know, would you run and look at this, or what do you think about this? So it's done, and, and much more, uh, partly professional, uh, handling of it, and, and time consumed way, way less. You know, and it was taken four to five weeks to get a building permit, and that's ridiculous. So with this method, uh, it just speeds it up daytime.
Jerry?
Yes, I'm gonna go back to the ten thousand dollars. The reason we set that up originally in the contract is at the request of Jill, because at one point in time, when Ron was our engineer, she said that she had a, well, working relationship where she could just call them, Ron, and just ask a question, and maybe not get billed, or maybe only get billed for a half hour. And that's the reason we put that in there, so she would be able to access the engineers, ask the question, and based on that question, it might, she might be able to move forward, based on the answer she gets, or the answer is, well, no, we need to go and look further into it.
Yep.
So that is set up to help facilitate, um, Jill giving all the information that she needs to determine whether she can make that call at that time, or she passes it on to the board and the engineer to make the call.
That's correct, thank you, Jerry. Okay. So, go ahead, Thomas.
My two cents worth, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, when we took away planning and zoning, we had a lengthy discussion with Jill. She had agreed to take planning and zoning. And we agreed to give her a raise if she took planning and zoning. Not saying that if you're going to take planning and zoning away from Jill, I wouldn't want to say we need to take her raise away. But I believe the way it's being handled right now and then leaning on Anthony for the rest of it, I, I, it's no, no brainer.
Okay, thank you. Well, we kind of got off track because we're talking about whether or not to reinstate planning and zoning when this was, um, we were talking about Benish's services in here. And so we're kind of a little here and there on that. So back to Anthony's letter. Do we need a, this is just a statement of fact, and we don't really need a motion on it or anything.
No. We do, we do have a form that goes with the contract that we've utilized in other contracts, which is a work authorization. So, um, whenever, that, that helps you track that ten thousand. You can use it for that. So, um, you know, if you, if you decide to allocate funds to, as a part of that ten thousand, then I'll fill out that work order and it'll just get put in that, that year's contract.
And we still have monies left for this year?
A little bit, yeah. And I'll get you an account on that. I think we'll try to work with you because it was kind of a weird year.
Yes.
I'm sure we'll be all right.
Okay, all right. Vicky, did I see your hand up?
You did, but my thought just went.
Sorry. Okay. All right.
So I do have a question.
All right.
Can I make a motion pertaining to planning and zoning?
No. It's down under planning and zoning.
Okay.
And we'll do it when we get there. Okay? All right.
So I think that was, B and C are kind of not, we're not asking for, I think, a motion or, it's just informational thing. For the most part, I was here to answer some questions, outstanding questions.
Okay.
But I always like to follow up some kind of serious stuff with some good news, right? So, and even the state said, congratulations. So that was fun. I should send you that from Susan.
Yay.
They, um, we, our floodplain management team in Topeka, Kansas are exceptional. Probably they're the best people I've seen in that profession. And so I'm real happy about that situation. When I showed them what we had, when I came, when I came over to Benish, the first thing that she said was, well, you did a model and you proved that it's less than a foot. The floodplain rise. And I've had residents, we did notices to residents, so we've done our abundance of public engagement. And when they'd ask me how much, I'd say, it's point oh three feet. So it's, it's like less than an inch. It's three quarters of an inch. That's what the difference is going to be. Well, the state and FEMA only care about a foot or more. So when our floodplain manager said, why don't we just go to the state floodplain management team, which is a part of Department of Public Safety, and ask them to check with FEMA Region Eight, that's our region, if this is even necessary? They did it. It took about, I don't know, two weeks, three, not even that. And they issued us a letter saying, we don't need a plumber, and we can now proceed towards the loan closing. So I have a meeting on Friday with the D A and R to talk about the steps to go to closing. And so that way, I'll try to summarize that in a letter and send it on to the board.
Thank you, Anthony. And, and thank you to the floodplain administrator for mentioning that, too.
Mark Macy. He was excellent.
Thank you so much. Very helpful. Jerry?
That's just what he was just talking about and what came about that. That's why it's so important to keep the engineers firm involved in everything and not cut them out of anything.
Yep. All right, very good, Anthony.
That's all you needed me for.
Is that all you need us for?
Oh, that's it. I was here for you today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. Thanks, guys.
To explain all of that and to get the, we did sign some paperwork for him, so.
Been nice to know.
Hey, Kent.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Late, but not being here at all, I guess.
Well, thank you. We appreciate.
Been late than ever.
We appreciate, appreciate your being here.
Thanks, Terry.
All right. So that brings us to planning and zoning. However, I have spoke to a couple in the back here that are actually here for the purpose of fourteen, fourteen A. And that is their only reason for being here. And so I did tell them that we could move that forward for them, um, so that they don't have to be here. So fourteen A, just a second. Fourteen A is new business work order twenty-two-four dash twenty-four. Replace damaged culvert at four sixty Ferguson. I believe it was Chuck that brought that to my attention. Go ahead, Cal.
I was just, I was gonna make a motion that we address it right now.
Yep, would love to. We'll just do that. Okay, so I, I have also been down here, of course, many times. When I read meters, I, I walk through the community and see a lot of the different issues that come to mind. Anyway, their driveway, if you look at the picture, you got one, Kent? You do, okay. The driveway was built for a two-car garage, so a two-car driveway. And the previous owners then, I believe, gravelled on the side of the garage and on the side of the driveway to make it wider. And so now the, the parking area is a three-car parking area. But the culvert only covers a two-car culvert. So, um, and if you can see on the pictures, the, the culvert is bent a little bit. And somebody, I believe it was the previous owners, had put rocks all the way around it to, I'm guessing to protect the culvert and maybe their car because they possibly maybe have hidden it, hid it. And so the homeowners are asking for an extension to their culvert. Do I have that correct?
Yes, we would like it fixed.
Okay, and is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Um, we would like it extended as we had said. We just want it fixed. If you look down in the culvert, it looks to be like it's also sagging. We do not own any type of heavy equipment, any type of campers, nothing like that that'd be heavy. None of us are parked on top of it. We bought house with them last year. And so we are unaware if it had campers or anything. But we were told that is the city's curtilage to fix that. And we just don't want to have an issue where there's flooding because it's sagging or, like you said, it obviously is bent. So we don't want to have any further issues inflicted mitigated as soon as we can.
Okay.
Do you have any to say about anything?
Okay. I do not believe that the town or her most is responsible for replacing their culvert or adding on to it. You are the homeowners, and you should have realized those rocks were in there. And if you didn't like them in there, you should have pulled them out. Anything else? I, town's not responsible for it. Okay.
I have to agree. And if, if you bought it with a two-car garage, you obviously accepted it the way it was. If you choose to park in the third parking area, you're welcome to extend the culvert. But I feel it needs to be at your expense.
So I do see your hand up. I'll let you speak in a moment. I will, I will say this. It, it is not the town's responsibility to extend the culvert. If we did that for you, we'd have to do it for everybody. And, yeah, you want one, too?
Yeah.
Exactly. So that cannot happen. That being said, um, do I believe that the rocks are, I don't believe they should be there now that I see that. It makes it awfully hard to clean up and so we eat and all that. And I would think it would be easier with the rocks all gone from there. The culvert itself, we have several in town that are bent. It's on the end. And I think that the size is probably still about the same. It might be wider here, not as tall there, but I think it's going to get the same amount of water through it. Kent, any?
I, I, I think I agree that it's not the town's responsibility. Nor is it identified that a town or any kind of town vehicle or personnel would have done damage. So I don't see any culpability by the town. Number one, you start with the fact that that's not the town's responsibility. And if there's a, a new home built on a new lot, the county or the town, whatever jurisdiction, has a certain size, they want the homeowner, the new owner, or the developer builder to put in it. So it's, it's under our own state situation. It's not jurisdiction's responsibility.
Okay, you have more comments?
We did not obviously come here for the rocks. We are two grown adults. We're very good adults. We can move the rocks with all due respect. So we did not come here and waste your guys' time trying with rocks. You know, like you said, we did purchase the home. But our main thing is when we came down here and apart about it, we were told we were not allowed to touch it. We were told that that was your guys' curtilage. We were not allowed to advance it if we wanted to. We were not allowed to repair or anything like that. We were told by the city employee that was running this window a year ago. We've come in here numerous, numerous times to talk to people at the window. We've called on the phone, and we've been told you're not allowed to touch it. That's the city. Uh, we'll get someone over there. And so to be told that numerous, numerous times, we would have fixed it if we had had that problem. If we'd been told, oh, we won't touch it, that's your guys' problem, you guys need to fix it. But the fact that we've been told or misconstrued and the fact that we were told we weren't allowed to touch it and that it was city property and that our property ended before the culvert and we were told we were not allowed to do any type of landscaping, we weren't allowed to replace the culvert, we were not allowed to expand it, we weren't allowed to cover it or mess with it in any shape or form by the city employee is why we brought it here. It's because we were told we were not allowed to touch it under any circumstances to have a company do it, to have anyone do it. And so we brought it here, and it's been a year. We've called, we've showed up here, and we've been given the runner now. And so we just want a decision upon what's going to happen. I assure you, we didn't come down here to ask you guys or tell you guys, you guys are going to come fix it because of rocks. We just want a decision upon who's going to fix it and what's going on with it.
Oh, I appreciate that, and I'm glad you came for a decision. You are able, at your cost, to add to the culvert. But it will have to be, a permit will have to be written up, and it will have to be approved to be done. Size, shape, you know, where, how deep you have to put it, so on, so forth. And, and that is something that can definitely be done. And I understand why you would want it myself, so. Shannon?
Well, maybe some of the issue of, because it's in the floodplain, it needs a floodplain permit to go with it. So that, that was probably another reason why they had said not to touch it until you have your permits in place because it's in the floodplain.
They told me we couldn't touch it at all. And I'm thankful it was the city's property, and we're not allowed to do nothing with that property.
Well, I, I don't, not going to go into who told you what or where or when or any of that. What I'm telling you now, what we are telling you as a board now, is that it is a possible thing to be done, but that you have to have all the permits filled out. And, and after that, it'll come to the board again, and we'll approve or disapprove depending on the permits and the process. Mr. Ferguson?
Well, a lot of those culverts are damaged down there after the flood. And when they're, they're some soaked and stuff that's in some of them. That particular culvert, you can't even see through because of the borders that are in front of it and at the end of it. Just because the end is damaged, you don't replace the culvert. Those ends can be straightened. And there's several of them down there that have been run over in the past. And so it's on the rest to go in and straighten those ends up. It doesn't just destroy the culvert just because the end is smashed.
Right.
And you can stick the jacks in there and straighten them out. One of the things that we run into there in that, that the drainage is very complicated because from one end of that development to the other, there's only one footfall. And to try and get drainage is almost impossible. I mean, the culverts are there for the convenience of driving across the ditch. And that's about it. They, they don't really operate properly because there is no following the ground to get proper drainage. So some of the dishes stand with water temporary, and two, three days, gone. So unless we get three inches of rain at any one given time, there's not any problem. But, you know, the issues of water standing there and standing there and one thing another. I can't change the topography of the ground. So just because the ends are damaged doesn't mean the whole culvert is ruined.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Anybody else? Do we have, do we, yes, Joe.
Is Chuck saying that he has gone to the wrong town and repaired those ends in the past?
Not done it there yet. During construction and over the last twenty years, those culverts have been run over a thousand times. And some of them have been big pickups, some of them have been dump trucks helping new gravel in. We had an awful lot of damage when we first built it. People that delivered the gravel with the dump trucks drove over the culverts and bent them. So, you know, they ended up having to buy a couple of culverts if they ruin because the guy wouldn't get out and look, see where he had to back up to them.
I know that he has gone in, I'm not saying in Ferguson, somewhere in my neighborhood, I've seen you trying to pound those out or stretch them out or straighten them, however you want to look at it. And I can, we all concede now by this and that it will need to be done again. It unfortunately can't be the very first thing on the project list because it is not as important as other things. But it is on the project list, so. Do we need a motion in this effect, too? Or can we just, just let it ride like it is?
Yeah, it doesn't require official action. Just give, you know, advice and directive to, well, how to proceed with it.
So your advice is that you can, just all the proper permits, so.
As we wish to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. All right. That will bring us back to. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I forget you?
Well, she's, yeah, she hurries up and puts her car in the garage, she doesn't want to.
So that brings us to planning and zoning. Joe?
I have permit twenty-two-four oh three, which is a revised flat application for Jerry Stiles. In his first flat application, he had that entry off of the road at twenty-two point oh four feet. And our one fifty-five fifty-eight yard building setback and open space exceptions. B three says no dwelling shall be erected on a lot which does not abut on at least one street for at least twenty-five feet. So he has gone back to his engineer, had that revised to twenty-five feet. And we would just like it, the revised permit approved, and it is here to have signed. And it is here to have signed, so we can take that to the city.
Okay. And so that is, uh, taking that little three foot or whatever it is off of that abiding property?
Mm-hmm.
The lot four, or whatever it was?
Correct.
Jerry, go ahead.
Yeah, at the, at the time when the original plat was approved, uh, that was something that engineers didn't find, the county didn't find, and I didn't know at the time. What brought it to my attention was when I got the letter about my lie locks and I read the whole thing, and I thought, huh, I'm not in compliance here. And if you're not in compliance, you need to be in compliance. And that's why I went back to have it done. Because, you know, if I saw that, I don't want somebody in the future to, uh, come back and say, well, you know, the town already proved it, so you gotta let it go. Well, no, I just wanted to make it correct the way it was supposed to be.
Yeah, thank you. All those heard I take a motion in a second? Or who'll make the motion? Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carried. Thank you. B, Jill?
Um, I have 2024-25. Um, you asked, um, Travis Baker to come back with a conditional use permit for that temporary office, which he did, and I have that all filled out. Um, he is not gonna be hooking up to any water or sewer, only electric. And the building will be anchored with screw-down anchors. And the building will not stay on the property. So he's asking for the length of time permit, six months max. And after six months, if we need to revisit it and he would like longer, he's hoping to have six months to do it. Um, we're asking for, uh, motion and approval on that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comments? Jill?
Is it going to be running regular business hours? Or is this preliminary to building something?
It's preliminary to building. It's just...
It's not gonna be open?
No.
It's just, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. C?
I have C, 2024-28. Another conditional use permit for Travis Baker, same spot. He would also like to put a 10 by 20, um, shipping, not 10 by 20.
Eight by twenty.
Eight by 20 shipping container on there. And once again, temporary.
Who'd make that motion?
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. D?
Um, just a temporary sign application for American Legion Post 303 for repair. And yours and yours.
Make that motion.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. E?
E, temporary sign application for Custer County Fair Association. Same thing for here.
I'd make that motion.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Oh, excuse me. Sorry, Shannon.
Do these need to go through the board? Have they be approved in the office?
They, I, they are on there. It's just an FYI. I did not need a motion.
Oh, well, that one anyway.
You guys feel good doing a motion, then you guys...
Okay.
Thank you.
Aye.
All right, E.
Let me just do that.
Yeah, sorry.
Motion to form planning and zoning board.
Yes. Vicky?
I would like to point out before this goes much further that Hermosa is the town that talked to Tim Goodwin and had him go to the legislature and had it drawn up, passed, that third-class municipalities, due to population and expenses, did not require planning and zoning boards. Hermosa backed that up, and for years, we did not follow it. I don't feel we're in a financial situation that we can, um, fund planning and zoning again. Much less when we had planning and zoning, I was hugely disappointed. There was a lot of work done. Don't misunderstand that. But repetitively, as liaison, I would walk in and people hadn't read their packets. That's why they're done on Fridays. Um, research was not done. No one went to the lots and checked them out. Um, I feel that we're moving back to dinosaur land if we do that. And I don't find it to be a positive for the town. And I would make a motion to not reform planning and zoning.
I'll second that.
So a motion's been made and seconded. And so now we'll have comment period, and I'll, I'll bring up, I'll be the first comment. We did. We were the town that brought that forward. And many other third-class municipalities thanked us for it when it was done because there was a lot of, lot of items, a lot of things that weren't clarified because of it. And, um, and so it was a very good law. It, it, a very good law. And, and we did that. So we can be proud of that. That being said, it doesn't say we don't have to have one either, that we can't have one.
I understand that.
We can have one, should we deem necessary. I see your hand. Um, the discussion was brought up pop... partly because of the whole, what Benish was gonna charge for redoing the comprehensive plan and being a part of planning and zoning. And so there was a cost analysis to kinda look at. Now, Anthony showed us partially what the cost was gonna be and the benefits of having them do it rather than having P&amp;Z do it at this time. And he said that too. At this time, he thought it was better that they rewrite the ordinances. And, and he proved that in his statement. So on, on that account, I would have to agree with Vicky. I don't believe that we need it at this time. We may need it if we get a lot of growth. If something happens and we get to grow, um, I think we can, we can readdress it at any time. But that is my opinion right now. Did you have your hand up?
I, I just wanna compliment you on saying that because right now I do not believe that the town needs that added expense as long as Anthony's on board with that proposal he gave us. And it sounds like it'll be in very timely fashion and everything. I think we just need to table planning and zoning for right now.
Okay. Vicky?
Um, I'd also point out Hermosa is going to grow. How fast, I don't know. When it becomes a second-class municipality, everything changes.
Yes.
So at this point, I see no benefit in putting planning and zoning back in place. Because I feel like the growth is going to take place. It will not be long. We will be second-class, and everything is different.
Yep. True story. Joe?
Um, just kinda following along with Vicky's comment. Yeah, I, I think the, um, planning and zoning, um, tasks would be, uh, better done by Benish. And, you know, uh, they could get us set up for becoming a second-class municipality. And, um, you know, I mean, they'd just be doing the work on an as-needed basis. And so we would only incur any costs when they're actually, uh, performing the work, so. You know, for those reasons, uh, I would support the motion.
Okay. Connie?
We kind of all hit it on the nail on the head too. But just the fact that the expense, we don't have the funding for it until maybe Anthony can get our lagoon system set up and we can get the water going and some water pressure and some construction rolling again, then we can maybe readdress it.
Great. Jill?
Um, as I said before, I think it's an excellent alternative economically and professionally because he's going to be looking at those ordinances. And not that you can't still have work sessions and give him suggestions on what, and you should. What the town wants and expects for changes in those ordinances. But it's more of a one-stop-done.
Thank you. Kathy?
I think the fact that Jill has the ability, if she needs to call and visit with Anthony about something, that's a win-win too, and the timeliness of it. It, you know, it was taken five to six weeks to get a permit through the other way. And this way, Jill can look at it. If she's got a question, she can call Anthony and, um, you know, it's a lot quicker and it's done professionally, so.
Thank you, Kathy.
I think both people are doing a good job on it, really.
Thank you. Jill?
Um, I do wanna say I'm happy to work with Benish on this. Um, like I said, when I first started, um, we had Ron Banks, and I was always able to call him anytime I wanted, get an answer from him. And then for a couple of years, we had a new engineer, Aces, and then that went away. I did not get any assistance, no one to help me. And I was very thankful at that time to have planning and zoning because I didn't have anyone to call and get any help with anything, so.
Thank you, Jill. All right, everybody's commented, let's vote. All those in favor?
What is the motion? To make a, off the agenda for now? To not have, to not have, not reform.
Not reform.
Okay, we're not.
Not reform at this time.
At this time, correct.
Thank, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Yeah. All right, so that brings us to claims.
It's Kent's that we added at the beginning?
My power link was on quite a bit this last couple of weeks, so I'm getting it in later. Trying to maintain that at least once a month, Sabine.
Hey. I would entertain a motion to accept the claims.
So this is Hage. Where's, where's the other one?
I'll make that.
What page?
So Vicky made the motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, you too. Jerry, I see your hand. Go for it.
Yeah, uh, I see the claims as is, but then you're amended and putting Mr. Hage on it. What is his claim? So the whole audience knows.
The total of his bill is $4,636.75. Uh, it is for a month.
Is there line items?
Yes, there is line items. Fourteen and a quarter hours total.
Yeah, I can read through it if you'd like. I just read it.
Sure, go for it, Kent. Thank you.
Okay, uh, on the date of, uh, June 18th, 2024, prepare for meeting, uh, no charge. Travel and attendance at regular meetings, uh, four hours. Uh, 6/20/24, phone calls with Terry Kremelison, uh, rate disruptions by Stiles. Uh, 22/5, there was a couple of other things in our list up here that also took place with that. Uh, 6/21/2024, letter to Custer School District is follow-up letter sent, 6/18/24, a half an hour. Seven, uh, July 2nd, 2024, round conference with attorney at other assistant city attorney throughout the city, no charge. Receipt and review information from attorney at other, prepare for meeting. Um, receipt from attorney at others, again, is no charge. Prepare for meeting. Research, uh, very job description, travel to and attendance at regular meetings. Total 4.25 hours. Um, seven, on July 3rd, preparation of town hall trespassing notice. Uh, review of applicable, uh, any applicable statutes, a half an hour. Uh, July 15th, preparation job description, uh, uh, for town attorney, which I have with me tonight, a one hour. And, uh, and tonight, I'd rather forward thinking on this. I apologize if that's, if it's anything different on Monday. So, but I will guarantee you it won't be over that because it hasn't been over four and four and a quarter, so. But, uh, travel to and attendance at regular meeting, three, three point seven five. Uh, total of, uh, 14.25 hours. Um, and, uh, for a total of 400, uh, $4,631.25, cost of $5.50, things like copies. And, um, for a total of 4,636.75.
All right. Any questions on any of the bills? I see Connie, you have one in there. You trapped another one? Good. Thank you. Everything else is pretty standard? No other questions? Comments? Go ahead, Connie.
I didn't exactly trap it. We have some people in the trailer parts up here that have taken it upon themselves to trap some. They have some pets up there themselves that they are taking the responsibility to get fixed. We've had some that have been dumped. So, as we know, when I first started this job, I did a little walkthrough with the person up there that's the manager. And he actually sent me a message the other day. He was not very happy. He heard that I was taking money from the residents for some cat house, and I wasn't allowed to be trapping up there. And I'm like, I don't have any...
Cat house?
I'm not trapping up there.
Is that on record as cat house?
God, he's cat house, huh?
I thought it was outlawed that.
I thought it was outlawed too, Kent. I, I knew it, yeah.
A house for the cats for the winter. Maybe all those really... I'll rephrase that. Mine's in the gutter. But, um, anyway, he said, we shook on it. You told me you were gonna find a new homes. And I said, Linda and I were both there. You thought T and R stood for trap, neuter, and remove, and that is not what it stands for. And I told him at that time, I will not remove these cats because some of them are people's pets. The trailer park's totally different than a feral colony in an empty house. So, you may hear from him. I don't know, but...
You're doing good, Connie.
Yep. So we only have two female, two, two cats of unknown that they wanna catch. And we've already caught, I think, 16 kittens that they've all been rehomed.
Good job. Thank you.
I think we've done about 50 cats, and half of those have been rehomed. So, awesome. It's a huge difference. I've driven up through there. There is a few small kittens there.
We gave them a clap.
Yep. Battle Mom actually called, and they were like, we have not got one call from Hermosa, and we wish you would come and talk to our board in Huntsburg.
Oh, sweet.
Done a fabulous job.
Very good.
Thank you.
If there's anything bad about me, it's not true.
I don't know. Ms. Phillips?
Um, I was wondering, is, is it? We can't shoot dogs with BB guns when they poop on your yard.
No, ma'am. We cannot.
I want to shoot them in the butt.
Right, there, there's several reasons why. One is you cannot discharge a firearm within the city limits.
It's a BB gun.
It's still a firearm.
And I, I can't shoot them anyway. I can't hit them.
You can't hit them?
No, I can't.
Well, then my first, my first thing to you would be to go do some practicing for a long time at the shooting range before, oh, squirt gun, that'll work, yeah.
I swear that these dogs always come to my yard and poop in my yard. I just don't clean them up. No.
Yeah, those high-powered water guns, that would do us.
They're with water holes. I know they're not supposed to be in the house. They're supposed to be on the leash. But they're supposed to be on the leash. But they let them go out at night, and then I find dog poop in my yard. And it's just here, you know, and... I love dogs, don't get me wrong, but I hate cleaning up their messes.
Agreed.
Cause I like to have a nice yard.
Thank you. Okay, so we're still on claims. Um, we have a motion.
We seconded it.
And a second, and now we can...
As amended?
As amended, correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, that brings us to law enforcement.
Motioners are still driving around.
Yahoo.
Yoohoo.
Okay, that's a good thing.
I see them down there about three times down there developing something.
We do have, uh, new paperwork at your desk. Here is the log from Custer County. I'll get it seen in a minute. And, uh, So approximately forty calls. Uh, the first one dated the second of June, the last one dated the thirtieth of June. Some assaults, uh, wildlife, ambulance call, civil matter, serving papers. Well, this one out of county, that shouldn't have been ours, I don't think. Paper service, mental cases, scam calls, paper service, missed dial. So not even all of the forty are really of concern or legitimate. Any questions or comments? Connie, go ahead.
Was our town office notified about this missing child on west of town here? That's all over Facebook.
And Lauren Lentz said they were good friends of theirs. She's sixteen years old.
Custer County would have called to say we've got a missing child.
Yeah.
You know?
It's been on Facebook for a day now.
No, it was real, from what I heard, yeah.
Well, those things quite often come across your phone too, is a
Amber Alert.
Amber Alert, and I didn't get that either.
I didn't either.
No, I didn't either, but it's been on Facebook. She's, uh,
Joan?
The parents made a post on Facebook. Lauren Lentz, who knows them personally, um, shared that. And we also shared on Hermosa unofficial Facebook page.
She's sixteen years old, African, and white, has bracelets, black hair, brown eyes. Left the house on July fourteenth between midnight and four AM. Possibly someone in a black sports car picked her up. No, I thought it was an older white male.
Yeah, there was something about that list that was by an older white male.
Yeah, older white male, and she left her cell phone but took her laptop. We believe she's in danger. I thought she was taking some kind of medication too, but that might be.
I didn't see it.
Well, that is sad, but no, the office was not notified. Uh, we didn't get an amber alert on our phones, anybody.
I didn't either.
And, um, this is a
But I guess it's true.
Private matter, but in, in that being said, I, I mean, how can we help if we're not informed, you know?
Exactly.
So.
So it's like a kid. Pictures of black officers, a lot of kids that could be on grass here for Custer County, should maybe let us know.
Joan?
Well, quite possibly, I mean, she posted back the morning they, the first post was the morning they found their daughter missing. Or the day they found her missing. And then they posted again, but I mean, it's only been a couple of days. Possibly to report to Custer County, they have to be gone a certain length of time. I don't know, since she is sixteen.
Correct, yeah. Anything else on law enforcement? Okay. Abatements will get moved to legal. So that brings us to legal?
Yeah, the, um, put together a job description to, uh, post as the town board so directs one of the places I mentioned before. Be in the South Dakota Bar Journal. And, uh, post it there. I'll make a few modifications to accommodate that if necessary.
Okay.
Pass, take one down, pass it around, and I'll walk through it real quick. It's entitled, Hermosa Town Attorney, Position Available, Essential Duties and Responsibilities. Town of Hermosa hereby requests proposals from licensed attorneys meeting. The specifications below. The intent of this job description is to provide a representative summary of the major duties and responsibilities performed by the town, by the town attorney. The position may require job-related tasks other than those specifically presented in this description. One, attend town board meetings every other week or as requested by the board president. Two, provide legal advice verbally and in writing to the, uh, town board, department, uh, department directors and staff on legal matters involving the town. Assist the development and implementation of programs, policies, and procedures to carry out the activities of the town. There should be a comma right there. Draft proposals, rules, and regulations. Next point is represent or oversee the representation of the town at all stages of litigation, including hearings, trials, and other legal proceedings. Next point is prepare, review, and maintain town contracts, legal reports, records, and correspondence. Next point is review and sign all municipal bond issues. Next one is draft and review, uh, review of town ordinances. And the final one, uh, but not to be at the exclusion of anything else, prosecute town ordinance violations, including abatements. The qualifications are education and or experience. Jurist doctorate degree with experience in municipal law. Combination of education and experience deemed appropriate to fulfill the role and responsibilities of this position will be considered. Certifices and license are the admission to South Dakota Bar and all courts in the state of South Dakota. Compensation, I was going to make recommendations, maybe for, uh, an actual, for that, but to be determined essentially based on. Oftentimes, for, you know, for firms or for any office, it can be preferable and perhaps get a little bit better rate for a certain number of hours per month based on, kind of like what we're talking about with engineering, where there is a monthly retainer that's paid. And something that will most likely always be within the amount of time that would be expected to be expended on any given month. So you're not overpaying. Um, and it would be non cumulative, however. So if they only spent thirteen hours on a month that you paid them for fifteen, contemplated another retainer, then it's non cumulative. It doesn't build up. That's what, that's quite common. And then after that, uh, if it was fifteen hours a month, then, um, for each hour above that, you know, if it's a particular special project or something, then it's set hourly rate after that. And with that said, as I compared this, uh, well, not as of the first, but, um, I will, I will say that I've really enjoyed being back here. And it also found that by, uh, now being a somewhat of a single person and also, uh, not having kids at home, those kind of things, um, my evenings are less occupied. So.
Are you going to apply for this position, sir?
I just might.
So at what hourly rate?
Well, currently at three twenty-five.
I know that. And what hourly rate are you gonna charge us? Two twenty-five? Two twenty-five?
They say let's get a cut.
One seventy-five, two twenty-five?
Well, that's where the retainer can come in. Um, you know, it, it would be, uh, certainly a lower amount based on, um, a, a number of hours. So, uh, and what I was, uh, gonna suggest is something that the town, number one, feels comfortable in their budget. Let's say X amount of hours. If it's, uh, ten hours, that's two meetings for sure, because if they're usually average, travel to and attendance is usually averages four, four hours. After that, um, it's probably three days. You can see how my bills have been, the history of those is that, um, a retainer of something representing a number of hours at less than three twenty-five. So it was initially a big deal. And then that also, I think, gives the town a chance to, uh, determine, make a determination, what they want that extra time spent on, prioritize, those kind of things. I think, um, uh, the board does a pretty good job at being conservative in its directives. Not just saying, oh, go research something and have fun. So, and I think by the time, by, by, by this time, you know, we will, or, uh, I'm, I'm busy enough where I don't need to knock anybody's clock, number one. But, uh, also I've got a pretty strong awareness of limited budgets. And, um, but again, I go back to, uh, having enjoyed doing this. So, uh, I think what I bring to the table is twenty-some years' experience of knowing this town well. Uh, I do, I do really, really like this town, like this opportunity, so, but yeah, what the hell.
Okay, I'm gonna comment first on this. First off, I'm gonna say I personally would like to have you back. However, I'm also gonna tell you that it is, is a hardship. Your rates are a hardship for us. Um, our last attorney was ninety-five dollars an hour, and I know that is on the very bottom of the scale. I understand that too. I would like to tell everybody straightforward. I called the old attorney and asked him if he'd like to come back because our budget needs a lower rate for an attorney. It just does. Um, he didn't call me back. Yeah, so, um, I, I also appreciate the fact you have been with us, like you said, twenty years ago, you started with us. And, uh, each time that we've had to call you, you, you have come forward to help us. And other times, and, and that has been very much appreciated. Um, in my opinion, I'm gonna say, um, again, this is my opinion and mine only. This does not have to be posted anywhere.
No.
If you are willing to put a proposal into the town. And we will wait for that till the next meeting, I'm saying, if the board agrees with me. To, to hear that before we publish, publish this anywhere.
Okay.
Okay? Go ahead.
Well, I appreciate that. I, um, under state statutes, probably no. And it sounds maybe a bit self-serving or contrary to, uh, a conflict of interest or whatever it may call it. But, uh, state statute on, on hiring professionals with special knowledge of the subject matter, or in this case, the town itself, uh, precludes it from having to be bid. So you're correct. You don't have to post it anywhere. If it was looking for somebody straight out of the gate that'd say, yeah, you want to, for a number of reasons. But, uh, I also think that there's a lot of things I, I don't, number one, don't really charge for, but also there's a number of things I don't, because I know how things, um, progress in, in the municipal process. There are things that I, I don't do because it's inevitable they're gonna go elsewhere anyhow. So you don't need to look at chapter and verse on everything. And I still, based on my graduate law school, nineteen ninety, so since then, I've done some sort of municipal law. Those first five years of my career was at Assistant City Attorney for Rapid. Yeah, but always enjoyed those positions. I really do. But, uh, because of that level of experience, I'm pretty efficient at coming to a sound legally sustainable conclusion on things.
Okay.
Relative to them.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the board for any questions that they have for Kent or any comments? Board's very quiet tonight, okay? Audience, go ahead.
Um, I was gonna say, since you don't have, you're single and you don't have kids at home, you should be able to do this a lot cheaper than. A lot cheaper, like a family discount. But I do know.
Disposal support and many other things.
But, but I also, I, I didn't realize that the town is looking for attorneys, and I know quite a few attorneys. And I mean, I can check around and too.
And do you know any that have the municipal experience? Okay, all right. Jerry?
Yes, one of the things I would like to bring up, because if we need an attorney that looks first at what's best for the community, not for specific people on the board. When, when the whole deal I want to bring up is I think it was around thirty-five thousand dollars that was spent trying to defend Leah's design, which the state said was bad, bad, bad. And you kept on going up, and you went up, and you tried to harass the people at the, at the secretary or the attorney general's office to come down and harass the people in South Dakota DNR. We, we listened to them. They tell us what goes on. You did not have the best interest of our community. What your recommendation should have been, when she violated that law, she did turn our stuff in to get reviewed. A board member knew it wasn't turned in to get reviewed. Your first thing would have been, she should be fired. And being that had not happened, there was another organization that she went to work for, a developer like yourself, who now is, I don't know if I want to use that word, uh, broke because she did the same thing there. She developed plans, implemented, had them put into the ground, and then the state didn't know anything about it. So I adamantly do not think that you are the one for this town.
Well, I didn't expect any other type of, oh, man, no joke.
Yes, absolutely.
I didn't expect any other type of response from, from you, Jerry.
Excuse me? I'm gonna have a chance to rebuttal.
Well, okay. The bottom line is, is that, number one, when the engineer is another professional, and yes, if there's something that is, uh, illegal or apparently unethical, which I was not aware of anything like that at the time, nor am I, nor can I sit here now, because I haven't been involved in it for some time, can I say that she was proceeding a thing that's unethical, except for the fact she did submit, uh, or didn't allow work to happen before, uh, it was finally approved by DNR. Am I very happy that she is no longer here? Yeah, I think that she was not good for the town. The, also, the town attorney has the responsibility, or I should say, as an attorney, an obligation to represent its client, which in this case, the town zealously, and, and sometimes clients own, owns right. In this case, I didn't feel we were wrong. I felt that what we were doing was, uh, was done in good faith, number one. And no, I did not call the attorney general's office on relative occasions. That's how it is as a state of the land, if that's what they're saying. The attorney general's office has, has an assigned deputy attorney general that represents the certain agencies. In this case, uh, I dealt directly with her. When town attorney is involved in a lot of situations, especially when it's gonna be contentious, they'll assign a, a deputy attorney general. This deputy attorney general happened to be the one for DNR. That's who I communicated through. That's who I was obligated to communicate through. Now, were there times where I called for meetings and said, we need people down here? And including, uh, requesting that the secretary of agriculture, or DNR, uh, appear. And he happened to be around at the time, and, uh, he accommodated us. So I'm not beyond using whatever political connections I have to do right for this town if I think it's the right thing to do. And of course, and in full discussion with the town board president, who, uh, ever that may be. And I think you'll agree that when you were town board president for a relatively short time, I did everything I could to accommodate what your thoughts were, what your positions were, what your recommendations were. You used me a lot less to your credit. That's fine. That's fine. But to not respond and not do what you're directed to by your client, uh, to me is malpractice. And if it's within the bounds, bounds of ethics, which I won't violate, not knowingly, um, I'm gonna gonna zealously represent the town.
Thank you, Kent. Jerry?
Yes, and you said that there was no, there was a ordinance, there's state laws that were violated. You knew she violated state laws. You, under your deal there, is, it says prosecute people who violate state ordinances or state laws. She violated state laws by not turning that stuff in. It cost the town a lot of money, it causes a lot of rapport with the state.
I don't disagree with that. I don't, except for the fact that it's, no, it's, it's, the protocol and guidelines have that requirement, to get that approval first. However, in discussing it with DNR and so forth, it really didn't come down, I mean, that was probably the trigger point, as you probably recall. But it really came down to the details that were lacking or simply wrong in her design. That's not my department, sorry. I don't, I'm not gonna second guess them, I didn't go to school for that. So, but I agree with you, that professional department left something to desire.
Okay, thank you. Cal?
Yeah, I mean, I would support looking at Mr. Higgs' proposal, too, but I'd also just like to throw out there that we could entertain other proposals as well, after we see what he has to offer, and you know, if nothing else, for the financial incentive. So, that's my comment.
Yeah, I would recommend that, too.
Vicky, you were looking at a few a month or so ago, do you have any response from that?
We won't come here.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, one more time.
Okay, one more time, so it'll be a couple of things. First off, you standing as a town attorney would be like going back and hiring Leah back as our engineer. That's how far back you would stand.
Okay, Jerry, no, no, I don't need to hear that negativity. We all heard from you, and you're attacking, and it's just, it's just not right, Jerry. And so, I'm gonna stop you now, we all know how you feel, you spoke your piece, we understand that, and we'll move forward from there. Okay? All right. So, that goes back to the, right here.
One other thing under my items that isn't on here, that is a small thing, but pursuant to the directive that was passed and came out of the executive session, I do have that posting prepared.
Yes.
And we'll provide that so it can be posted in one or two conspicuous spots, so that there's any verbal or other types of confrontation from any citizen seeking answers, I use that term loosely, from our staff, that they'll have recourse, and they can point to that sign and say, "Please remove yourself now," or "Consider trespassing," and as such, the next call will be to the sheriff.
Okay, and that sign is, you are in the middle of that?
No, I've got it, I've got it prepared, I actually forgot to bring it today.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. Mrs. Pillen, the attorneys that you know, would you be willing to take this to them, or, and then they can contact us if there's any interest? Okay. On that note, we'll thank you for this. Shall we approve it? Officially approve the application form?
I made that motion.
No.
He was gonna put together a proposal to submit.
Well, yeah, I realize that, but we have suggestions that we take other proposals also, and Kent agreed with that also.
Gotcha, propose that, go ahead and publish it.
Well, we're not gonna publish it yet. We'll give it to Mrs. Pillen, and we'll put it out, hang it here, hang it wherever we can hang it, put it on the website, and by word of mouth, we'll start there. Okay?
For your distribution?
Approving.
Approving the job description?
Mm-hmm.
I made that motion.
You made that motion.
For distribution.
So, we're just approving? Approving the job.
Description?
Yes.
Do we get it first, second?
We get it first.
I'll second it.
Thank you, okay.
Pretty sure I know what I'm approving.
Yes. Connie?
Can I post it on the Hermosa forum page?
Does anybody see a problem with that?
I don't. It reaches a lot of people, it might reach some attorneys, you never know.
Okay, yeah, that would be fine. Oh, she has it?
Like, if it's just posted, I, I think it should be non...
So, they can't make comments?
Well, yeah, like, there shouldn't be like a whole paragraph of one person's decision one way or another, just to post it.
I'm not saying anything, I'm just gonna post it.
I can't find the words that I want, I'm sorry.
It's all right, I totally understand. Okay. So, motion's been made and seconded, all of those are in favor.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, board. Okay, Kent, we moved, in the beginning of the meeting, we got way into the abatement process again, and the old abatements that at the last meeting, we kind of, we approved that we would send out letters, and basically, all the old ones, all those old abatements were null and void because of the fact that some of the processes were not followed properly, and, so those letters have been sent, but Vicky is disagreeing with the process, and she has a comment to make, and so we're gonna need your ruling on this again, I think.
Under 91.07 notification guidelines, item number one, courtesy note, I did that. Donna knows I did it. The complaint was there, a letter on the back was there, a recheck notice was there. So, I don't understand what part was not correctly done. Additionally, I've done this for many years, over the years, never has there been an objection until board members, previous board members, have been mentioned that they have violations also. I was very, and so was Donna, in doing our due diligence, checking them out, verifying, et cetera, et cetera, never paid attention to names, I have even written myself up. So, if you don't think I was trying to be fair, I was. Some of these, based on the way this is written, has been discussed over and over and over, that this does not allow for complete following of this in an exact way. The problem came down to, when it came to certain persons, all of a sudden, it's wrong. It's been done like this for 20 years I've been on the board. However, now it's wrong. But the problem come down to me is, some of these are very important.
Right.
This is, in my opinion, showing the citizens, "I can pick you, but I can't pick you. I can pick this part of this ordinance, but not this part. I can say, with the exception of, or this doesn't apply because it was the old neighborhood." That's not what they read. How can you adjust them, one by one, by person, area, "I like you, I don't like you," and call it fair? And if they are already enacted and written up, how do you simply throw them out, and then I look at you and say, "But Kent, hey, I want your yard mowed." Can I then turn around and say, as a board member, "Well, I don't want my yard four inches tall, I want it 12 inches tall, I want the ordinance changed." I'm sorry, those are conversations that have come up. This is where I just come totally unhinged, because to me, fair is fair, right is right. They've been written, they're in the book, either follow them or get rid of the book.
Okay. Thank you, Vicky. Cal, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, so, my objection to the process was, it seemed to be a hybrid between the abatement process and the complaint process.
Yeah, thank you.
And the complaint process, I mean, the first part, I think, is okay, because you have the notification of the plaintiff and the owner of the...
What the hell?
...of the determination, but part B, should the complaint be declared valid, the Town Board of Trustees, upon a majority vote, may give violating order a courtesy notice of violation of the first offense, and so I don't believe that that part was adhered to, and then also, the part where it requires all actions to be, all actions to be made public at the regular board meetings as well, so.
That is my point, and I see everybody's hands, I'll get to you. The ordinance, the policy, whatever, is not well-written, it's not for this time. Maybe it was great whenever it was written, 10 or 20 years ago, but things have changed. That is, that is number one, it needs to be rewritten. And I would say, because of the fact that they got, there was, whatever it was, 10 appeals, and the discussion we have had, we've had, I don't know, eight or 10 hours of discussion in board meetings on this, and can't come to agreement, that to me, shows that it needs to be revised. And, and that alone. Now, to go on a, maybe a little bit more personal, seeing how things have gotten quite personal here, I will, I will go ahead and state a couple of facts here, and Vicky, I'm, hey, I'm specifically talking to you, just a minute?
Point of order.
Just a minute?
Point of order, point of order. You stopped me from being personal, you do not have the right to be personal.
Because you were attacking, I'm not attacking.
We'll see.
We'll see, yes, we will see.
You're not the presiding officer of the meeting either, Jerry.
So, this comes to, my lilac bushes have been this tall for, well, I don't know, maybe not this tall, but you know, maybe they grow six inches every year, I don't know. They've been that same way for, since I own the property since '80, and nobody's complained since that point. I specifically remember when Vicky got on the board, and she flat said, "There is no way, no how, she would ever write a complaint against her friend that had property that a lot of people felt should be abated." And she wouldn't do that. Well, that person left town, and then she was immediately ready to take over that position of...
That's not true.
That is true.
That is not true.
That is true.
Okay, girls, we're not gonna have an argument.
Thank you.
We need to cut.
Thank you.
I wanna say something. This lilac bush bullshit, excuse my English, is going to have to go. We're gonna have to just ignore them because they were there, they've been there, and they're gonna be there.
Thank you, Donna.
Just forget them. And if they're bad, yes, I agree that you should maybe trim them, but...
Excuse me?
Just a minute.
It's, it's not gonna go away.
That's right.
And, you know, I know it's in the past, but you also made a statement, that old part of town and the new part of town.
Because there is a difference on the right ways.
No, there is not a difference. The abatements, the stuff pertains to the whole friggin' town.
Yes, it does, yes, it does, but there are differences between the two.
Excuse me?
Yes, Vicky, it's your turn.
You are totally off-base on this bullshit of, "I started in when my friend left town." No, this all has come over years and years and years, and I stayed out of it. The fact that Terry left town, so what? Part of the issue surfaced when I was told her house needs to be condemned. Really? It's her house. Yeah, there needs to be repairs done, it's her lifestyle. You have your lifestyle, I have mine, I'm not condemning you for your lifestyle. However, how do you go through, hire someone, ask them to take care of this, this stuff is written, it doesn't say, "If your lilac bushes are 25 years old, it's okay." So, I finally just walked away, because it isn't gonna change in this town, nothing is, the BS is going to continue, it's going to continue with, "I want, I'm gonna change, I don't like this, so, I don't like you, I don't like this part of the ordinance." So, as a board member, and this was stated the other day, yes, my lilacs are eight to 10 feet tall, I'm not cutting them down, I'll just change the ordinance. At that point, I went, "I'm done." At this point in my life, I don't care whose yard looks like what, I really don't give a shit, pardon my French, because you cannot justify, I cannot, I cannot, as Vicky Hendrickson say, "I believe in a town that will go, 'I like you, but I don't like you, I like that ordinance, but I don't like that one.'" So, let's pick and choose. And, just for notification on this, on this page, it says notification guidelines. That is the paper I have always followed. And it says, "The courtesy note will be delivered. Courtesy note shall state the violation which was done, the expected remedy which was done, shall reference the ordinance which was done, and shall state the date of reinspection which was done." What part of that did I not handle? I handled every piece and part. I did not get back to re-inspect, because I did not feel it was fair, that with all the rain that we had had, that it was justifiable to say, "Oh, in the last three days, it's rained two and a half, but you didn't mow." God crucify me, hang me up to dry, flog me with a wet noodle. I did the best that I could do to try to be fair. I spent hours and hours and hours to be publicly addressed wrongly, and I am not appreciative of that, I deserve an apology. I did not start out doing any of this because of Terry. At that point in my life, I said, "You cannot condemn her home. She's living on a very limited income, there are other people in this town that have properties looking virtually the same way. Some of it is a lifestyle choice, some of it is no choice." And Terry's yard usually looked like a park, but I found it totally unfair to say, "We need to condemn that house." There are other homes here, too, that look kind of the same way. But it was said, because at that point in time, the Town Board President was pissed off at her, and I wouldn't go along with it. I won't go along with it at this point in my life. If that's what this board stands for, I don't want a part of it. And I would like that reiterated word for... And I would like that reiterated word for word. Thank you.
All right, Donna, I believe you were right.
Back to the ordinances. I believe that they have been written, and now there are chapping some of the locals and the board members, and so they wanna redo them. Why were they wrote that way to start with? Why did we pay that kind of money to have them wrote that way? Just because you're on the mo... on the board does not mean that you do not have to go by the ordinances.
Cal?
Uh, in that being, I'd just like to reiterate on ninety-one dot ten B where, um, before the courtesy notices go out, requires a um, majority vote of the town board of trustees to declare them valid. That was my main objection.
This is the paragraph that I have always been told to go by. That is not written in that paragraph. I know what that one says.
So, that right there states that the ordinance is itself...
There are two conflicting reports.
Right, it's conflicting. That right there tells you it needs to be revised. It needs to be rewritten, whatever. It needs to be taken care of. And here we are again with another half-hour worth of discussion on this subject. And I will get to you all, but Shanna was next.
I don't... I don't think that just because you're a board member saying, "I'm going to change the ordinance because I'm not cutting my lilacs," I don't care if you're a board member or you're a town member, does anybody think that you have to cut off beautiful lilac bushes? No, we need to change the ordinance. I think that specific ordinance was there way before I was here, and I've been gone for ten years. So, and I was here for ten years. So, that's gotta be at least thirty years old. And I agree, lilac bushes should be able to, the lilac bushes. I don't think, those are written as when a complaint is received and you look at it. We, we don't need to be out there with the ruler looking for problems to issue letters for. If someone has a problem, if we receive a letter or a complaint, come to fill out the form, we follow up. But who's writing the complaints? Someone in town, or are you out there driving around looking for the complaints? There's the difference.
Okay.
Do we want it in our ordinance that we are going to be checking every whatever? And that's our process, and then we issued the letters? And the way the notifications went was always under the nuisance ordinance procedures for grass because the process was faster.
Correct.
So, they didn't even follow that. It was issued by the town, form letters on addresses. They were sent, and then they were rechecked, and... Mowing is one, I, I just think it should be done on an obvious basis. You drive by, it looks like somebody's been on vacation for two weeks, you know? Grass up to their knees, it, something needs to be done. I don't think we should be in the business of condemning homes either. It's... But if the, you know, there's an issue with a hoarder and the floors are bellowing, the walls are bellowing, there's bats flying in and out, that, you know, then yeah, something needs to be done, but I have, no, I, I don't know anything about Terry's or the story about it, I don't think we need to hear it. I'm just saying, it, just because you're a board member doesn't mean it's not a good idea to amend the ordinance.
And I will reply to that, Anthony...
And I'm trying to grow lilac bushes myself, and I plan to let them grow whatever, six to eight to ten feet tall. How do you get privacy at the end of a block?
And I would just like to point out that Anthony even said the same thing, that ordinances get rewritten, they get redone. That's just the nature of city and the change in life.
Can I make a motion that we put this up for review? To change it, and so we can be done with this discussion?
I kinda thought that motion was already made, was it not?
I mean, what are we discussing, other than arguing about it?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
I mean, until it's in front of us and we can tear it apart and give ideas to what we wanna change, what are we discussing here, other than personal feelings about what has happened, or what should happen?
This has nothing to do with my personal feelings. If I went into my personal feelings, your ears would hurt.
I'm sure it would. And if you said you wrote yourself up, I would love to see that letter.
It's been in the past because I have been violated lately.
Okay.
But when I have...
But it doesn't matter. I recall letters from when you first moved up there. That yard was a mess before you got there. And it took a long time to get it cleaned up, so I know they go... It's not just now.
Right, thank you. Donna, please put the board members...
I want to know what this means here. It says Chuck Ferguson, Manning, Whitney, request a pro... procedure to follow. What, it, we've never gotten a letter. What, what is it about?
It's about a list of complaints, of twenty-some complaints that came in anonymously.
So, how come they didn't get thrown out?
Well, I think they did. I don't see them on the new list. Do you?
Well, I don't know which ones are new, new li... This is the sixteenth, and this is the ninth.
This is pointless.
Connie?
I don't really care what any of you guys do, but I'll tell you what, every citizen in this town is scared to death to let their goddamn grass get to be six inches tall. They know I come to a meeting and they're like, "Does this look bad? I don't need an abatement, I gotta leave for the weekend." They're terrified. You guys are... You're helping to the citizens?
Why, who's terrified? Who has gotten a letter for six-inch grass?
They haven't gotten a letter. They just hear all this stuff.
Well, then why are they terrified?
Because they're afraid that they're gonna get an abatement. Because they've been out of town or whatever. Shit, I got an abatement for four weeds this tall.
That was not me.
Oh, I know who it was.
So, is this ridiculous?
Is this the new one, or is this the new one? Uh, just a minute, please.
I can agree with that. It's ridiculous.
Jill?
Abatement was moved to legal because of conflict of interest. This discussion has already taken place more than once. We've had the attorney's input and recommendations. Why is it going over again? That's not why, why it was moved to legal.
That was my question. What are we doing here? What, what do we need to do?
What do we need to do is the question. I, I still believe in people having the right to discuss and to voice their opinion, and Chuck has not had his voice yet.
The ordinance is getting rewritten. We have heard twenty minutes of that. So, that's the time to change it or amend it or whatever. There's no point throwing hatchets and shooting arrows here. It's all a lose.
Right.
Move on.
Thank you, Chuck. Jerry?
Yes, one of the things that was said that you would look at ordinances or violations, whether it was a health issue or a safety issue.
Correct.
Now, this is secondhand information, so I'm gonna have to ask Chuck to verify it. But supposedly, there's been two rattlesnakes that's been killed around the intersection of Third and Manning. And between a fence line west of, on the second, between the two. I don't know if that's true or not, but that is what's being said, and if that is the case, there is a safety issue over there.
Chuck?
That needs to be addressed.
I don't know about two, I've heard of somebody with weed eating and got bitten by rattlesnakes. Other than that, I don't know much about it. That's one of the reasons why the grass needs to be cut and not create habitats for stink. Uh, when you attract mice and that kinda stuff, then you attract snakes because snakes like mice. And that's, that's one of the things that comes into the ordinance with egg-related issues. When you have animals, and you have hay, and then you have manure, and then you have mosquitoes, and then you have mice, and then snakes, and if you have chickens, coyotes and fox, they like chicken, not necessarily well-done, but they like it, so...
And that is one of the reasons.
It's put there for safety reasons so that you don't attract a lot of wild animals and snakes and whatever else.
Yep. That's one of the reasons why the board approved Connie doing her thing with the cats, because the cats are beneficial for the mice and the voles and the moles and...
They kill snakes too.
And snakes also, yes. And that being said, my dogs also kill snakes, which I'm not very happy about because it, they've never come across a rattler. But, um, they've, they like to get rid of the garter snakes, so, you know? But, uh, it, there is a part of nature, you know? Uh, it's kinda like we have had in the past, and this is in, to my knowledge, y- a couple of years in the past, where we have had mountain lions come through town. Well, we didn't have any chickens at that time. Um, we weren't taking care of the cats at that time. Um, but they still come through. Nature is nature, and they're gonna, it's gonna do what it wants to do, but we do have to prevent where the grass is concerned, that is an issue when it gets too tall. Not six inches. Uh, as a matter of fact, um, Jill and I have been going around town. Have we done it three times now, or twice, Jill?
Twice.
Twice. And we started out with just a drive-through as a starting point. And then a week later, we went through and we seen who had taken care of anybody that kinda had an issue, a possible issue. We wrote it down to ourselves. And we went back through and, and just as we had expected, ninety percent or more had mowed their lawns and taken care of them over the weekend, which is normal. That is normal procedure. And it also is, you have to consider, I mean, did it rain an inch last night? You know, I'm not gonna mow in the morning when it's that wet, you know? You, you do have to consider those things. Jill and I have sent out some letters, courtesy letters, and, um, they were on properties that have basically been untouched for weeks, and I don't know, Kent, I think you'll remember this. Um, we went through this years ago about this abatement process. We've, we've done this on and off for years. But one of your things, back then, one of your ideas was that if it was a continuing problem, that it would not have to be as long of a process to deal with. So, in other words, if a certain property, um, every month gets an abatement letter, um, you made it so that it wasn't as long as a profit, process to make sure that they got a letter.
That's when we used the, sorry.
Thank you.
Put it under the nuisance procedures.
It was under the nuisance procedures.
Because it was safety, health, and welfare.
Safety, health, and welfare. And that is, and, and I myself, when I go out and read meters, if there is a place that I have to walk to read a meter, then I inform the office to please call, send a letter, whatever. Because of the snake problem, let alone the mosquito and disease problem where mosquitoes are. And so, yes, those get done. Why anybody is scared? I... Connie, please tell them, we're not ridiculous here. We have not been ridiculous here. We will not be ridiculous. Um... Go ahead, Donna.
I would like to make a motion that we end this abatement conversation. We table it until we get something back from Anthony other than the grass. The grass has to be attended to.
Health, safety, and welfare issues.
Right, and, and I'm not talking just grass. I'm talking about in the fence line. It doesn't do any good to mow your grass if you're not gonna weed eat your fence line.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Health, safety, and what?
Health, safety, and welfare. We have a motion?
Uh, uh, I'm willing to second it, but can we get a, like a succinct reading of what the motion entails?
Yes.
So, we're clear?
Mowing, fence line, weed eating.
Well, we're already doing that, so I just wanted to see what, what purpose are we trying to accomplish with this?
And I don't understand why they do not mow around their culverts in their yards.
A lot of people don't.
I don't. Why?
Cause it's not a mowing. Mostly at the culverts, you have to weed eat. You have to be, you know, a little more careful. I don't know why they don't do it. That's minor done.
Well, would you go ask them?
Knock, knock. Kent, thank you.
One of the things I, I want also to note is, is any foliage encroaching into a site triangle. To me, that's probably the most dangerous, cause
Yes.
Uh, life safety, big time.
Yes, and, and those were all inspected, and there was nothing wrong with them. And that was another problem that, that I had with the letters of abatement or complaint or whatever they were that were sent out because they were not verified. If they would've been verified, they wouldn't have gotten letters. And I will speak to another abatement that was on there. Uh, they got a letter about lilacs. They don't even have lilacs in their front yard. I mean, these are things that were wrong with those abatements, and, and I don't wanna carry it on any further, but
Oh, that you have.
It is...
We need to let it die.
It's done. It is to die, yes.
Die, 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 it's dead.
Thank you. So, how...
It's ten after ten.
What do you, what's your... It's ten after eight. Ten after eight, and we're only halfway through the agenda, but the rest of the stuff is quicker.
Motion to end abatements, abatements and table until we get something back from Anthony.
Right.
And we're only gonna address the health, safety, and welfare of the grass.
Can we quit, grass? I mean, that's what we're talk...
Motion to limit abatements to mowing and...
Are you amending the motion now?
Well, I'm trying to word it correctly.
Oh, she already worded it, so we're gonna...
Of what you're trying to get out of it, right?
Thank you, Kathy.
So, she made to end the abatements and table. Only address the health, safety, and welfare. And then what after that?
We're gonna all, hey, we'll concentrate on the grass, the fence, weed whacking, and culvert cutting. I don't know how you wanna say it. Cal, how are we gonna say this?
Um, that we, the, we limit the town's enforcement action to uh, nuisance abatements, uh, which include, um...
Nuisance abatement would'll, which'll include grass?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's included in nuisance.
Weed eating, fence line, and culverts.
Wait, 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 you're talking way too fast.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay.
It's under...
Yeah, so, I'll just, I can just make a motion to amend the, well, there actually isn't a motion on the floor. There's only one that's been proposed, so nobody seconded it. We have no motion.
Okay.
So, I, I can...
I thought you seconded on it.
I said I was willing to second it, but I wanted to get a
You didn't, okay.
A, a read of it, so, uh, so...
And it will become off from the agenda.
And so, if we let that motion die, I'll make a motion in, uh, Donna...
You're gonna kill me?
I'll make a motion in your honor, Donna, that we, uh, that we limit the town enforcement at this time for, what, four months? Three months?
Yeah, well, it'll be July, uh, September, October.
Take, make it six months. Give us till Christmas or whatever to get this done so that we can get past the...
We, we limit it to the, uh, the nuisance abatement, including the grass and the weeds such as found in ninety-one point oh four.
And we're gonna remove it from the agenda for six months.
And we'll, yeah, we'll remove it from the agenda also.
I'll sign it.
We're still writing here, so I'm giving the finance officer a little time to catch up.
She's gonna read it back to us?
No. So, limit town enforcement at this time for six months for actions, nuisance, nuisance abatement, including grass and weeds as found in ninety-one oh, in ordinance ninety-one oh four, and remove from agenda.
Cal?
Can I ask Mr. Hague if that is, I mean, is, is that too broad? Do we need to focus it more? Are we... Are we, are we voting on, like, if we limit enforcement to that, does that mean that we can't act on permit violations or things like that? Do we need to focus it to be, um, instead of, you know, saying what we are only gonna do, say what we're not gonna do, or keep saying?
Right, I, it, it becomes a function of what's most feasible to, to follow. In other words, uh, if I say I'm gonna do something, I can only do such things. Or there's a multitude of things I am not doing. So by virtue, perhaps it's easiest to say, uh, as we've started to worry, the life safety issues. And the nuisance ordinance, that's, that's another interesting aspect there. Because the nuisances are, you, you have broader discretion sometimes, certainly within the process. Number one, they're not grandfathered, nuisances are never grandfathered. But I, I guess if, if you're suspending the enforcement of certain provisions, you gotta enumerate which provisions those are.
Okay, Terry, read it back to us.
Well, I did read it.
Kent, wait a second, Chuck had a comment here.
One of the issues we ran into last year was that when there was a grass abatement and it didn't get enforced, then within the rainy season and time limit, the grass got so bad that the abatement was, the cost of cutting that was double what it was two weeks before. Because we have grass right now, it's this tall, in the city limits.
Yes.
It's gonna take a bobcat to cut it, because it's, a zero turn is not gonna cut it. Unless you go over it two or three times, that multiplies the amount of time involved in cutting it. So, the grass is a huge issue. It needs, when it's, time to be cut, it needs to be cut. And if it isn't, then you abate it, then you look at it and, what's it gonna cost you? To mow this and clean it up? You know, it's went two, three weeks too far. So that increases the abatement cost huge.
Well, if that's tall, that becomes where you use the nuisance ordinance. And that can be done within three days.
Three days.
Instead of three weeks.
And, and by the very idea of what you're trying to accomplish, that is, okay, we're gonna suspend enforcement of certain provisions. But if it falls squarely under the nuisance ordinance, and we have a three-day, uh, uh, time window where we can bring action and take care of it, abate the nuisance, that by its very definition, it kinda narrows what we're gonna do and how quickly we can do it. So that the other ordinances dealing with some, some of the overlapping issues, if they, if those issues get to such a point, then a nuisance kicks in. And it may, if you're doing, trying to do a bare bonus because we're not sure just exactly what these other ordinances need to say, at least we can rely on the nuisance ordinance and proceed that way. And nuisances, by the way, can be declared. If there are things that aren't squarely, may, may generally be in the ordinance, health, safety, welfare issues, that's a broad umbrella. But it is the keystone to all activity that town, board, the city councils and commissions should be doing. So, I guess where, where I, my point is on it, is that, um, if you're seeking and you, and there's something that, for instance, trash heaps, if there's something that is attracting or manure piles, anything like that, if it's not specifically addressed in the nuisance, it can be declared nuisance for very specific reasons by this board. But I always, I always really reiterate, make sure it's, it's, um, the reasons that are given are well-reported. Cause those are the type of things when somebody gets a, a, a bill from the town for six hundred dollars for an abatement action, they're gonna scream, they're gonna fight, they're gonna wonder why the hell they're doing this. Well, it's just right here, Mr. so-and-so, because, um, this existed and we deemed it in our discretion to be a nuisance.
Yep, and, uh, you, you had put that, the nuisance in your motion.
I believe, I believe we covered that in mentioning the ninety-one point oh four notice to abate, because it does include the weeds and the grass, and it mentions nuisance. And then nuisance is also defined in the definitions also.
Okay. Do you wanna reread it?
Limit town enforcement for a period of six months to act only on nuisance abatements, including grass, weeds and others as noted in ordinance ninety-one oh four.
So does that mention that, uh, weed whacking fence line?
Well, remove any weeds, tall grass, noxious matter or nuisance found growing, lying or located on the property or upon the public way abutting scene.
Okay. So I, I, do I have to make another amendment?
You're, no, it's, the motion's been made, we haven't had a second yet. Have we? You seconded it, I'm sorry, yes, you seconded it. So are you okay with it?
Yep, I'm okay with it now.
Okay, Chuck, you had your hand up.
Well, I'm thinking in six months' time, all the leaves will be on the ground.
Well, of course.
So, the vision might be back and the grass will be dead. You don't need to cut it.
Right.
Six months might be a little bit long.
That'll, that'll give us the time to rewrite the ordinance. We do not, it, we have to take some time to do this. And right at the moment, we have a whole lot of issues that are very important. And if we can take care of the health, safety and welfare issues and, and get the ordinance or the policies redone. Yeah, we need to work on that, yes.
In the meantime.
In the meantime, yes. Get it worked on so that it's done and ready with, at the end of the six months, if not before.
Health and welfare, but it's also safety.
I said that. Yes.
Health, safety and welfare.
Health, safety and welfare, yes. Okay.
Cal said the good.
All those in favor?
Sorry. Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
Okay, motion has carried, thank you. Where does that bring us to here? Now we're on public works. God, Chuck, I don't mean to rush you, but.
Always been such a, been four, last two or three weeks, I don't know where to start.
Okay, we'll find someplace.
First of all, some property that was going to be rezoned or something like that, there was an article in the Cusco Chronicle that mentioned several things that was not true. I named one, and it named me personally. So, when I went for a retraction, uh, they stood corrected and indicated that they had made a mistake. I did not get the retraction, I, that's why I indicated, uh, how much, glad to know the insurance they had. And so then it went from there to a correction.
Good.
So, I don't know if anybody was following that whole thing, but I think that it did not turn out quite as well as it might have. Uh, moving on to other things. On streets, um, they've got lots, lots of work to do. I mean, so I'm requesting, uh, we're hauling about, uh, a belly dump and bringing in thirty-one ton per load. Uh, dump trucks, uh, which are limited, are bringing fifteen, sixteen ton per load. We had, uh, chose, uh, the Streeter pit at Buffalo Gap because that was much better gravel. Um, the Supreme gravel in South Dakota comes out of the drain square. And there's no Fs and Ts. However, mileage led us to other plants and inferior products. When you wind up with mud balls this big in gravel, whether it's clean or road base, is not acceptable. So, the Streeter pit turned up what that kinda stopped this last time we got it. Terry indicated it was around twenty dollars a ton delivered here. I'm requesting, uh, sixty ton, the more road base be brought in for repair on the streets. Simon's has the road oil that we're looking for, four dollars a gallon, so it's roughly twenty dollars for five gallon barrel, if you use them now. So, that is a binder and a water repellent that is necessary for potholes and that kind of thing. That, once you put, I explained the anatomy of potholes several times, but you have to have some kind of water repellent in your mixture so that it dissipates the water. That stuff will do that. So, I'm requesting to be able to buy that, uh, to help with the situation. We've got, uh, canyons all over town where some of the water has ran that previously had been addressed. And, uh, I, I'm just, can't even begin to believe when the DOT decides to clean this storm drain, the amount of gravel that's gonna be in there. I don't know how they even propose to clean it.
That's their problem.
It's gonna be huge. But we are contributing to that problem. So, uh, anyway, that's it on the streets. And then the shore thing has come in, raised.
Can you wait just a minute here, please? We need a motion to get gravel? Better gravel than what you got before, is that what you're saying?
It should come out of the drains, because that's, that's the top gravel there is.
Okay, I need a motion?
Additional gravel?
Addition, additional gravel, yeah.
Or switching the, or he's getting the gravel.
Or both, at the same time.
Question.
Okay, go for it.
Oh, and I don't know, because I wasn't here, but I did hear a rumor that the street budget kinda got wiped out last year for this year. So where are we at with that?
It's gonna be supplas, it needs to be supplemented. Because, uh, when they did that Seibach project, it was actually done last year, but I don't think it was built until January. So it came out of this year's budget, which of course they didn't budget for that. So there probably would have been a surplus last year that would have went back into the general fund, and so we'll need to do, uh.
Yeah, that supplemental should be able to move it.
Yeah, so we can do that. And I have one other.
So you're back at whatever you budgeted for?
Yeah.
I would like to request, I know it's under financials, but, um, since I know I don't have a copy of your budget.
I have a copy of your budget for, but this right now I wrote, and then we're gonna be working on the twenty twenty-five. So I'm gonna, I mean, just next month, so.
Yeah, just where we're at now and what.
Well, and this will, this will show you that. Yeah.
So we have money for it?
Well, we're, we're in the hole, but we're gonna, we're gonna do a supplement.
And we have the money to supplement?
Yes, we do.
Cash on hand, on a message?
Yes.
Well, I think keeping the streets up is very important. And, and I mean, we have to take something from some, from some other budget. It's necessary.
Okay, Cal?
So did we make the motion yet?
Uh-uh.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, that we let Chuck buy the gravel on the binder, which he deems suitable for fixing the roads.
So sixty tons?
Sixty ton of road base, yes.
Road base, and then, uh, five gallons of.
Probably gonna get around, uh, forty gallons or so of oil.
Forty gallons of the oil for the potholes. And do we, um, Chuck and I drove around a little today and, and in some of these areas, I think we need some bigger rock underneath the base course. And I think, didn't, we think that might solve or help the problem?
Well, it would help, uh, deter some of the erosion problem. When you said it isn't our problem, it is our problem.
Well, it is our.
We are adding to that.
But cleaning it is not our problem.
No, but they're gonna say, where'd all this gravel come from? It came up your streets and ran in the storm drains. So we are adding to the problem big time. So, I, you know, it's an ongoing situation. I mean, when we get rain, uh, the culverts need to be cleaned out and ditches reestablished, and it's a huge situation. It isn't gonna happen overnight. So, it's just gonna have to be addressed a little at a time and don't bring in, you know, Zanstra and rebuild the city with streets and gravel and stuff, you know, I mean, we'll get her done, but it's taking.
All right. And do you have the larger rock? Do we have any of the larger rock?
We do have some.
Okay.
I believe I have enough to treat the smaller areas that we look at today.
Okay, then we'll, we'll leave that for now.
That's ripper out, it's this big.
Ripper, okay. Okay, motion's been made and seconded?
I'll second this.
Okay. For the gravel and the oil? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carried. There was enough to carry it anyway, so it doesn't really matter. Okay, um, we're still on Chuck.
Yeah, next, uh, deal is, uh.
Street lights.
Street lights, um, we've, we've got a few of the power lines that, uh, wiring has been cut to them during the boring.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, the ones that have, that I'm speaking of at this point are directly wired into the transformers. So the RA kinda has come down and disconnected those, so we can repair those lines. And the first thing that went out wasn't to locate it. Number one, I don't locate electrical lines. So, the boring company after cutting several, uh, they were aware of the fact whenever there's a green transformer there, it very likely is a small wire going out of there that's running along the streetlights. So, that kinda nipped it in the bud cutting them without relocating. So, those will have to be repaired. And I don't know whose expense left to go. It's probably gonna end up, you know, a little bit time consuming to fix these. Okay, then, um, I have made the rounds, Vermont, to look at the city's streetlights. And we still have a couple other in the alleys that are questionable, who they don't wanna do anymore. The main big lights have all been, okay. Do you have some repairs?
Could you make a list of those that are in the alleys that you are in question of? And we'll have, uh, the office staff call. And as I recall, they are privately put in and anybody that lives near those streetlights can pay the bill if they choose. And if nobody's willing to pay the bill, then they are either off or they go on and off, and on and off.
If they're metered separately, that's one thing. But the town gets billed by the month for the amount of lights, they don't meter them.
Right.
Just so much a month for each light.
But.
As you said, some of these they're put in in different areas that, uh, you know, they just need to be removed, or if people want them there still, then they gotta pay. Chuck, what was it?
I don't think they need to be removed, but Shannon, did you have something?
I was just gonna say, if they're listed on our bill, they should be fixed.
Mm-hmm, right, okay. Joan?
Well, I know that, um, like the one in the alley behind you, there was one.
Behind me?
Across the alley. Um, that was privately owned, and they were billed for it every month. As far as the new owners, I don't know if they had it turned back on or not.
Nobody, to my knowledge, has offered to pay that bill.
I think that if you actually talk to the electric company, you'll find, that they're not billing the town for ones that are privately owned.
Great, okay, thank you.
Uh, another thing that would fall on the streets is Tower Hill. And that's probably gonna have to be addressed by Anthony Holberg, who there is. And that's probably gonna have to be addressed by Anthony Holberg, who there is. The agreement that was made and signed and normalized and legalized and whatever else on what has to be done up there is a little more extensive than what meets the eye. The road itself is gonna have to be restructured to get the drainage to the other side and go in the ditch. The way it is now is coming down, following the road, cutting grooves, constant maintenance. The owner that's there comes into what the developer's role is in the thing. It is a city street, it always has been. He's maintaining it and has put gravel on it and one thing or another. But the point is that it is a city street. And, you know, he's getting tired of maintaining it and blah, blah, blah. So to correct the drainage is one thing or another is the same thing that we've looked at before. You and I were up there today and looked at the situation over. There's quote unquote going to be a parking lot there. That's gonna have to be dug down and some base cores put in. I mean, when I'm talking base cores, I'm not talking three quarters big cores. There's gonna have to be big stuff because the garbage truck turns around on that and some other things will probably increase the ruts and make the basins not quote done right. So that's one area of that's gonna have to be addressed. It's a situation you're gonna have to go through Anthony and, you know, there's gonna have to be some major reconstruction down there. If things are done, well, the promise too deep, it's not gonna be a simple thing. So there you have it.
Okay.
That's part of the streets and whatever. That's gonna have to be addressed, but through Anthony and what's gonna have to happen there. Okay, the other, the water situation, I think we should take the boulder tank off of the.
Agenda?
Off the agenda.
I would.
Eventually, when we come to the cleaning and maintenance on it later on, then we'll address each problem.
Okay. Water updates, how we doing?
Well, we actually, the usage is up. It's been raining and one thing or another, and Jill has done the loss reports. And as usual, it's doing this. I mean, we have twenty-nine percent loss and then we have one percent loss. And I think maybe the prairie dogs are patching the hurdles, I don't know, which is another issue on Tower Hill. That a family of prairie dogs has moved in and they're destroying landscaping. I have talked to Cheryl Eggbauer and she was gonna assess what has to happen there. And we need to exterminate them now.
Now.
Because they breed like rats. And we've got three tomorrow, I will have twenty-three in the next two or three months.
We were up there today and, I mean, them prairie dogs were big. They weren't like what you see at the park, you know, like this.
They're eating well?
They, they are eating well. They're, they're, they're happy campers up there, I'm telling you. They do need to be taken care of ASAP. Yeah, okay?
In, in some of the streetlights and things that are, the boring that's went on in town is starting to rear its ugly head. At the time when the locations were done and one thing or another, the variance in the depth that they go is unreal. We've had water mains cut at six, seven feet deep when they were wanting to go three feet. And it's continued. So what has happened here recently, I took them down shoulder, many parts of sewer back. So my first thought was the boring. And that was put in by the town several years ago, the new, the new sewer line. And so for it to collapse or something to happen was probably very, very ill. So it had become a safety, health issue because it was backed up and raw sewage and what have you. So I called Rambler, they come down and got the plug undone and then they cambered it and guess what? They hit the pipe, so they put Midco put the cable in at twenty-eight inches deep, they hit the sewer. They'd been three inches lower, they'd have missed it. So now we have a situation, I have contacted one of the contractors, but we can't really pin down who actually did the dirty deed. But Midco, whether they're gonna pay to have it fixed or not, it certainly is not the town's responsibility. I'll put it that way. So if it's gonna have to be fixed, help them. Who's gonna pay is another story. You know, then they're gonna come back and of course Jill says, well, I said locate it? Well, of course it was located. And Mark and all of the above. I mean, so it was hit. Fortunately, it's been the only one that I can really say that we've had a problem. So that's gonna have to be addressed tomorrow. It's usable, but easy. So that's something that we're gonna be addressing tomorrow.
Ken's still in the hospital?
What?
Ken Fortune, is he still in the hospital?
No.
No, he's home. You know, limited resources, you know, whatever happens. It's one of those deals that while it's, it's his sewer and the ordinance says and blah, 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 well, that does not include if somebody else cuts it. So that's where that's at. So it's gonna have to get worked out on who's gonna repair it. But it is a health issue at this point.
Has Midco acknowledged that they're liable, they're just? Midco, they've acknowledged they're liable then, regardless of who cut it?
The old story, first chicken or then they wouldn't locate it and then we hit it. I pictured the bravery from the camera that was inside and the fact that the Midco line is right in the picture beautifully. So that's, moving on with water is I've talked to Mike Moore. We've got a few complaints on water, one thing or another. It actually got put on Facebook. And somebody said, well, how long could they have since you changed your filter and blah, blah, blah? Anyway, we had one issue that the guy had no water pressure and was constantly complaining. When we got to the house and did some investigation, he had a filter in the house that he hadn't checked for ten years. So needless to say, it was fairly plugged. And creating waters in the water and low pressure and all of the above. So sometimes there's circumstances around some of these complaints.
Can I, on the water, do we have any need to put on water restrictions?
I don't think so at this time.
Okay.
I mean, we're using excessive, I have not run up the flag that we got a problem.
Okay.
Leak slash usage. Before, you know, Craig Wolf has turned out and was in the figures and that kind of stuff. So at this point, usually when there's a leak that allows anything, you know, the Hawks are setting on every coast. And somebody, nobody had reported anything or any loss of pressure or anything to indicate. And the outline there is those meters have been double checked, make sure they're not excessive usages in the outline of lines.
Thank you.
Basically, I have contacted Mike Moore and last year we had aggressive flushing system set up for the hydrants and one thing or another. And that will really rattle up the natives because it does have a tendency to stir up the water. We have a treatment system that's at Moore Wellhouse that is polyphosphate. And what that does is suspends the iron in the water. This water has a lot of iron in it and it shows up. And it accumulates in the pipes and one thing or another. And then when that breaks loose, that's when you get rusty water, you know, on a tow engine, too much detail on it. But flushing is one good practice and needs to happen. That was supposed to happen last fall, it did not, they got busy. They got it back on their schedule, so we were trying to flush the whole town.
Okay.
And that's gonna take a lot of water to do that. So that's, that's in the, in the works. On it, they've been working very diligently on the work orders. Trying to, and I'm assuming that you made a list last time that you read meters on, what's on the old ones and.
Yeah, there was fifty, fifty some old ones.
Fifty?
Yes, Jill has the exact number, but yeah, it was over fifty, so.
So with everything that's been going on, it's been really hectic. And Chuck is not well and all that's limited the workflow. And I'm really not well, so.
We all know that, we've known that for years.
You know, we can only get so much done. You're kind of this town with that many things to do. And of course, we're maintaining the work on the road.
Yep.
Two or three times a week, we're over there pushing this project forward.
Right.
And I'm scheduled to go tomorrow to Apple Springs again to look at disassembling that stuff. How it's gonna get moved and get back together and stuff to get brought out here. So if you think I'm gonna build a town for my personal advice, probably will have to. Maybe have to buy lunch.
I might, I might have a ten dollar bill in my pocket.
That's all I have.
Um, the sewer's holding its own? The sewer's holding its own with all the rain and the wind and?
It is, actually there's a hundred degree days and it's, it is. It makes a huge difference, evaporation and the heat and that stuff with the volume is. Hopefully, we're gonna get everything in place and stuck before we get in trouble.
Good, good. Shannon?
Smells.
It smells?
Yeah.
You have?
It comes through the, through the south window?
When it's, when we have a southeast wind, I can smell it a little too, but. I, I know the issue, I know the expense, I know, and so I just shake it off.
No one has complained, I'm telling you.
Shut the window on.
Yeah.
I've made the statement several times that probably ninety-eight percent of the people in this town have absolutely no idea where their water comes from and how the group gets to the glue.
I agree.
And they don't really care.
Not ever, right. Do you blame them?
That was built in nineteen sixty-one and there've been awful, hot people that have moved in right around the dam to do it.
Yep, exactly.
They was there when they moved there and when they bought there. And you're not gonna change it, we can't move it.
Exactly. Thank you, Chuck. Deb?
Chuck, did you talk to Elizabeth Hansen and the one that posted this on the Moses Community about dirty the water was?
Yeah, over here. That was, you need the one that, that the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was an inline filter and when was the change last? You know, they're designed to collect whatever. That issue was kind of addressed a couple of months ago that he needed to invest in a water softener and not a cheap one. And the guy that sold him the house and did all the stuff is related and kind of confirmed that that's the thing to do. So had a lot of scale built up on the faucets and that type of thing. I said, you're the only ones complaining. Probably got cheap faucets to start with, so, you know.
Okay.
We're not going there, you know.
Okay.
And it's real easy to post stuff on Facebook when you don't know all the details. Who knows when that filter was changed last? And they're supposed to look like that because they're supposed to be trapped. We went into the deal with the polyphosphate. What that does, it suspends the iron in the water, so it does not collect on pipes and plumbing and one thing or another. It's quite expensive. And it comes in a fifteen gallon barrel and it's like four hundred and thirty dollars a barrel. And I had kind of ceased using it because of the expense of it. We may have to go back to it. I mean, it's, people wonder, you know, about the water bill. And all they said, the water's free, how do you get it?
Yep.
They don't have any idea what's involved in infrastructure, pumps, tanks, piping, all that stuff. They have no idea. All they know is what the water bill costs.
Exactly. Thank you. Deb, did you have anything else?
No, no, I was just wondering if you'd address it. And I'm not saying it is under most of the water, it just makes it look really bad.
It does, yeah.
As I said, it makes the town look really bad.
I had one person say that it's, the audience, it's a water safety green.
All right, we're gonna move forward, Chuck. Thank you, thank you, everyone. That brings us to finance officer.
I will be quick. So you have the June bank statement is in the packet. We did get all of our fraudulent charges back, whatever. So like saying, that counts still on that restrictive status, so only allowing those deposits to go through. And then any other like checks or something, we're double checking those, make sure they're legit before we let them go through. So that's good. The new Bankwest account is opened. We don't have any money in it yet. So I need to write a check and I know we made a motion to transfer our business over there, but does it matter? Cause I'll probably write a check tomorrow to, and just move it from Pioneer Bank to Bankwest so we have some money. It's a hundred dollar minimum is what we have to put in there, so.
Well, I'd make the motion that you put in a thousand.
Okay.
Get it going. Do I have a second?
One second.
Motion's been made and seconded to put a thousand dollars in the new account to get things moving.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Okay. And then we did talk about maybe possibly moving that CD that we have with Pioneer Bank right now. So with Pioneer Bank, we earn two and a half percent on it. And I did check with them if we were to take, cause it doesn't renew until September third. So if we were to take it out right now, we would lose three months' interest, which would be about thirty-two hundred dollars. But Bankwest has a special on CDs right now. You can do an eight month with five point zero five percent or an eighteen, fifteen month for four point seven five. And Vicky did, from Bankwest, did calculate some interest and it's like six thousand. So at the eight month, she said it would, we would earn sixteen thousand eight hundred thirty-three, I think it would be for the year. And then a fifteen month, it'd be twenty-nine thousand six twenty-five. So well over a thousand dollars in bonds. So, and I, so I don't know if that's something, and that special's only going through the end of July, possibly, maybe into August. But right now it's set to end the end of July, so that's the only reason I brought it up.
So what you're saying is that what we would lose by the penalty would be more than covered by the better interest with the other.
Yes. And the other thing I did, you asked about insurability. So with Pioneer Bank and Trust, I called and our checking account is insured for two hundred and fifty thousand and the CD is insured for two hundred and fifty thousand. But now with Bankwest, they tell me because we're a municipality, our funds are a hundred percent insured. So I thought that was interesting too.
That is interesting.
She said you are a town, so public funds are fully covered with no limit, is what Vicky helped told me with Bankwest.
Wow.
So another positive thing for Bankwest, I guess.
Do we need to decide whether to?
Well, I guess I wanna know if we wanna move that CD.
If we don't know if it's gonna still be available in August, this is the last meeting.
Yeah, he said possibly, if they know, they're talking to somebody, they could, but he didn't, he didn't, there was no guarantee. Right now it's set to end the end of July.
Go ahead, Ken.
So kind of wondering what was just mentioned in second.
So, kind of wondering what was just mentioned in second row. Is it the six thousand dollars interest if we take it out of Pioneer now? Is that a penalty that comes off our balance? Or is that just simply money we will not earn because we're taking it out and moving it somewhere else?
Probably, because we haven't been paid that interest yet, so...
So, we're just losing it. It's not a penalty.
So, we wouldn't gain any interest because we just got interest in June and renewed in September. So, that is...
Yeah.
You could earn three, but now you're going to earn six.
Yeah, and we've earned, since we've had that CD with Pioneer Bank, we've earned about twelve thousand dollars interest in the couple of years that we've had it.
And I guess that, how much, which is a...
It's a five hundred thousand dollars. It's the money we got from Custer County for the water.
Then there's also a TIF holding account in vision of that?
And I don't know if that's a, because there's another one that's a fifteen hundred, but that's not the TIF. I guess I'm not really sure where that TIF money is. Because when I get the... That's a separate, I think that's another that's not on here. Yes, because we did, well, that was the three thousand. And I'm not sure. I guess I'm not sure where that money really sits.
Okay. Did you remember how much generally that is a couple, two, three hundred thousand or?
It wasn't more than a couple hundred thousand.
Okay.
I think I looked. It was just over two hundred thousand, I believe, is what's sitting in there.
Yeah, the insurability is something I was going to pick up and Bankwest is saying that it's because it's a municipality. I guess, not a, I'm not a hundred percent sure. There are extra insurances that they can buy, the Institute, Bankwest can obtain to cover for any type of depository that is going to be over two fifty, if that's requested, so... But the FDIC two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit is, there's a, there's about, I'd say, ten to twelve different categories of what called, what they are bunched in as. And the same, say if I have a CD here, a CD here, a CD here, and they're all two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because it's the common ownership, it would be considered up to two fifty, even though it has seven fifty of it. Unless there's additional insurance applied to it. I guess I want a little clarification on that. The other thing to do is I think I remember seeing Highmark had a seven month, and I'm sure they have a twelve month, so the seven month, I saw it was paying five seven five, it's like that. So, I can, I've got to call them tomorrow to finish, so I can kind of inquire real quick.
Cal?
Do we have a motion on the floor? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, if this CD money is going to mature in September and it was earmarked for the water system, is that correct? So, is it, was it set to mature in September because we're going to need to use that money on the water system after that? If we tie this money up now in an additional CD, are we going to, are we going to lose the ability to spend that on the water system?
So, the biggest thing there is, do they give penalties for withdrawing early? The water system, we're not ready for it yet.
Right.
And I would say just from experience alone that we're at least six months, if not a year, out from needing it. But we still need, this is money and we need to make sure that we're not losing anymore and hopefully gaining more. So, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'm in favor of making money for the town and everything, but I would just like to see us talk to Anthony and just get confirmation from him that, that we can, we can get into the CD, allow it to fully mature before we need to make any, you know, purchases with the purpose of the water system.
September's not that far away.
No, the biggest thing was, we're losing money now.
By not moving it.
By not moving it, exactly. And, and we don't know that that is going to be available in September or even August. And so...
We've only got two weeks until the first of August.
So, we have a question for Anthony. And then we have a question on, or do you already know if there's penalties with the new?
I did not ask.
Okay, we'll need to know that. And then we'll need to check into Highmark also. And...
And how long are the new ones? Was it six?
You could do...
You said fifteen months, but was it six or seven months?
Eight month or fifteen month is what these?
Eight, eight or fifteen? Eight would put you at then May, right?
No. What are we in now?
March.
September, October, November.
Doing August.
March, March. End of March.
End of March. And if we did end of July, it'd be end of March. Any way possible.
I, I think we're probably...
If you're doing a water project, it's not going to start till spring anyway before they dig. You actually need funds, probably.
What was the last, excuse me, just a minute.
Experience.
When was the last date that Anthony kind of gave us? Construction bid goes out and we'll have that by...
I thought it was in December, but that, that's for the lagoon though, right?
Well, he's trying to work it all up kind of together. Or give the, the option for the company to do it all and then get a cheaper, cheaper rate because they're here for so long with the two different projects. So, if, I was thinking maybe it was December, so that already brings us to only three months. So, I would, I would say that we should maybe make a motion in contingency of finding out the information and, and then, I hate to call another meeting because I don't, I don't want to have another meeting if we don't have to. Or we're busy enough, but...
The motion contingent if there's no penalty?
If there's no penalties and whichever is the best. Can we, I know that we have heard before, no phone polls. In this particular case, if we make the motion that we want to do what's best for the town, the best money-making, whether it's Highmark or Bankwest or leaving it where it is, can we do a phone poll?
Well, I think you can do a directive right now. And we're based on the finance officer review of the different institutions that whichever one she determines to provide the greatest return without inadvertently tying up money that's going to be needed.
Needed, right.
Then she's authorized to go ahead and make those transfers. And authorizing the town board president to execute documents associated with those.
I make that motion.
That was good.
Ask for attorney.
Okay.
Verbiage.
And, and I would...
You're always good at that.
I would add that in addition to the five hundred thousand, that number one, verify that it is, it is insured for that, not just up to two fifty like right at FDIC. Secondly, is that whatever other monies are being held in mechanisms, the TIF fund, and then there's another chunk of money somewhere.
That smaller one.
A fifteen hundred.
Oh, fifteen hundred, oh.
Which is...
Oh, okay.
Something like FEMA.
There was some FEMA money.
Oh, was that FEMA money?
I think. Because of that, the count is in the budget, I think it's...
It's a small business account over here. Yeah, business plus account has the fifteen hundred. But I don't know where the TIF money is.
You got it all written?
I think that's just in checking balance.
I think it's just in the checking account because we have a million dollars in there, and so I think that two hundred fifty is just sitting in that checking account.
Do you have it all written properly?
From the time I was here, since that's where it was.
I would think the same directive would apply to any, any holding account that has what we would believe to be a significant amount of money, which is ten grand or more, maybe. I don't know. But certainly the TIF fund in this, this county, the TIF five hundred grand, needs to be looked at.
Thank you for coming, Bill.
So, based on finance officer review to provide greatest interest to town?
Authorize a transfer.
And authorize, authorize transfer funds?
For two separate CDs then?
To, to...
One for the five hundred and one for the two hundred?
Other, other institutions. And see, because it sounds like Bankwest is, you know, they're, they're in the running for our daily business and so forth. And that's great. But if there are other institutions that if you're not, instead of making five point zero five, they're making five point seven five, you know, maybe that's where we put that five hundred thousand or whatever. But I think we need to get as much money in high yield accounts as possible that really does count up.
Okay, authorize transfer funds. How do I want to word that?
A directive to finance officer to transfer funds.
Do you have the recording?
Yeah.
Play it back. I can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Do you still want to go? No?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And then the only other thing I had is if we wanted to schedule the meeting to do the budgets, the twenty twenty-five budgets in August, because those will need to be done by September first.
Okay, our regular board meetings are the sixth and the twentieth. Custer County Fair is the eighth through the eleventh, or seventh through the eleventh, I believe.
Yours and yours, I know it's on the tan.
Yeah, so that would be right then. Not that it matters to anybody on the board, I don't know, but Bike Week is the first through the eleventh. Shall we do?
The Central States Fair is same week or the following?
Usually it's the nineteen, used to, but not anymore. They've been doing it the following weekend, so that would be the sixteenth through the twenty-fifth is what they did last year. So, shall we?
That's about when I'll have, sorry, when I, probably will have Melanie at the fair.
Fair.
Out of all of those different...
Oh, fine, okay. Thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth? Three days?
You still do like revenues one night, expenses the next, and balance at the...
Thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth?
Do you need an extra day in between the revenues and expenses? It's nice to have that extra day.
Might be. And then, I don't know, like the final, the approve. I mean, I know last year you did that like later than the month.
Then you approve it at the following meeting, the second meeting.
So, thirteenth, fifteenth, and approve on the twentieth?
When's the next, what days in the board meetings, the sixth and twentieth?
Yeah, you want to look at this, all the big, so sixth and twentieth are board meeting. And if we have budget meetings, the thirteenth, fifteenth, and then approval on our regular board meeting and then twentieth.
Thirteenth, might still want your third one to balance it if there's any questions.
Thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, or we're going to miss?
I was just saying, put a date between the first and second meeting.
Thirteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, the Friday night?
No, I don't want to do that Friday night.
Twelve?
It's really pretty quick.
Twelve? Twelve, thirteenth, and fifteenth? Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday? You going to be ready on a Monday?
I can be.
Cal, how's your calendar look?
Well, I don't go anywhere, so I'm okay.
So, you're saying twelfth and the thirteenth and the fifteenth, and then fifteenth?
And you usually do expenses first, then revenues, and then, yeah.
Revenues and then expenses, so you know how much money you have.
Revenue, revenue's first, revenue's first, then expenses.
And then expenses, okay.
Great.
And those are all starting at six?
All at six, yes. Okay?
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, Matt, bring this.
Motion to set the budget meetings then for the twelfth, thirteenth, and fifteenth?
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't know. Have they posted?
I think we do. Well, we will post it.
No way.
Of course, we will post it.
I don't recall.
And those are, again, all the public is welcome to those.
That's the only reason I put it in a motion.
Think I'm going to sit in my chair. Think I'm going to sit in my chair.
No. Okay, all business. Appointing the subcommittees. So, that will be, I'm going to go in the opposite order. Finance committee is always president as chair, vice president as vice chair. We'll go to water committee. Chair is Cal. Shanna will be vice. Sewer committee, Cal will be chair, and I will be vice chair. Street committee, that will be Shanna as chair and myself as vice chair. On law enforcement, Donna will be chair and Cal will be vice. On abatement, it'll be Joe and myself. And then we will, we're still hoping that when we get past some of this stuff, Cal, are you all right with that? That we will form committees and, and welcome the public in some of those committee meetings, but we're not having any of those just yet, so we're not going to worry about that.
So, who's on streets?
Streets is Shanna and myself.
I thought I asked to be on streets.
You did ask to be on streets, but because your husband does most of the work on it, I decided that maybe it was best not to have you there. And I appreciate you offering. Thank you so much for that. That goes to be quotes for the dumpster sign. Oh, whoops, yes, Shanna.
I just want to say, you know, just because there's chair and vice chair doesn't mean that we can't all work together on any of those, so...
That's right.
Don't be disappointed you're not on streets because your input is so valuable on, on all of them. It's okay.
It's late. She's, this meeting is an hour longer than I've got yet, so...
I'm getting tired.
All right. Quotes for dumpster signs.
So, I contacted Summit Signs on, you know, reworking that sign. And so, if we just did, and they will do a whole new line, they won't just do like the in-town like we asked. If we did like in-town yard waste only, it's thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. Or if we change the whole line to read, or no, twenty-four fifty, excuse me. And if we change the whole line to read, all, all yard waste must come from within town municipal limits, it's thirty-five fifty. And then I said, well, what about, you know, install, and it's another eighty-five dollars to install it.
Holy crap.
I know.
It, it's not just a sticky thing that...
It is. I mean, and I, like I say, I contacted my nephew. He has a sign shop in Pier. He'll do the in-town for twenty bucks, and I can put it up there. I don't know if it's going to do any good to change or not.
We have to change it. We have to change it, so that's...
It's just adding a line to the current sign?
And that was for one, so, and we need it for both sides, yes. Jerry, did you ever comment?
Yeah, when you limit to yard waste in town, they need to have a place to put Christmas trees, and Christmas trees aren't yard waste. You allow, they allow Christmas trees in there in the past. So, are you, because the way it's written, you're going to be kind of putting Christmas trees, take them somewhere else. I think it's important to do people to bring Christmas trees so they don't show up on everybody's driveway.
Ken, can we just put a thing on the back of the water bill in December stating, or in January or both, stating Christmas trees are welcome in the dumpster, and would that be good enough?
Yeah, I mean...
Jerry?
Yeah, that, that's good. That's good.
Okay, thank you. So, now it's just deciding what, what we want here. Do we want it just to say in-town and just add the in-town in front of what's there? Or do we want to change the whole thing and read the whole long one again?
All yard waste must come from within town municipal limits.
That's more specific. That's more specific.
Well, no matter what we put up there, they aren't gonna read it anyway, so it ain't gonna matter.
Has there ever, did you guys already make the motion to limit it to in-town residents versus utility bill residents?
That's done. Yeah. We can't do utility bill residents because the people down on fairgrounds.
I'd rather see it on this line.
Get a water bill.
And they don't get a garbage bill? Like if they have a current utility garbage bill? When I was here, we had a few people out of town that paid a garbage bill, and that's the only bill they had, like Van Sambeaks, I think.
In-town residents only is what it says, and that we changed that.
I guess that's what I'm asking.
Bill that would include?
Right, the garbage bills.
The whole little, right.
The monthly, the monthly garbage bill.
Yeah, no, in-town only.
In the city limits.
Definitely.
So it's eleven dollars more to be more detailed, is that what you're saying?
For each, yeah.
Yes, but then it's also the installation, because they won't.
So is it difficult to put up?
Well, I say, my son, my nephew has a sign shop, and I put, I put.
You should have his signs for him.
And I sent him a picture of this.
Hold the letters, do you?
Yeah, I mean, I really don't think.
And in their option, it's just a sticker, put on the current.
Okay, I'll make the motion then, that we go with your nephew or your family. And we stick it on ourselves and try to save that two hundred or three hundred dollars that it would be. And I guess if it, if it doesn't last more than three years, well, maybe.
Twenty dollars wasn't shot down.
Twenty, yeah.
Still ahead.
People are gonna read it anyways.
Just spend another twenty dollars three years from now.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so my motion is with.
And it's Childlike Signs is the name of the business in Pier, so, okay.
That.
And with Summit Signs, the sticker, would, were they willing to print it and give it to you, or did you have to have them install it?
You know, I just, I didn't ask it, because they kinda want, they did the sign and.
Right.
They kinda, but then they didn't know if the guy could come down, when he could come down and do it, I mean. They were kinda difficult to deal with.
Owners are new.
Yeah, new owners, but it was.
So I made the motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I said. For the longer works for her sons?
Uh huh.
Did you do the longer?
Yep, the longer, so it'll say, all yard waste must come from.
Okay, if you're taking, the only bid my nephew gave me was just to add in-town up here.
Oh, okay.
We don't need anymore in there.
It's what, it would just, we would just add right here, say, in-town, and he'd give me a little sticker like that, and I would put it before that yard waste.
That don't work, it's only twenty bucks. But they don't read it anyway, Linda.
I know, well, this is, yeah.
Tell them the wording, whether you.
I know, so are we okay with just the in-town?
Yes.
Everybody, Joan, comment?
Well, you know, people don't understand it the way it is.
Well, I know, but legally, we have to do something, Joan.
If they don't understand the way it is, I think you need the full sentence. Or they're still gonna argue with you. So what, it came out of my yard, who cares if I brought it there six months ago? It's from my yard, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Well, she's got a point.
Can you get a quote from him?
For this?
I mean, I asked him for both, and he only wanted to do the ones. He's really busy and he does, you know, and not being here, I don't think he felt comfortable. I mean, he would do like the in-town, but. I mean, I can look for other, I mean, because, are there other signs, there's probably other sign shops around, isn't there?
I use Sign Express for all kinds of.
Sign Express, so I could get some.
Get some more quotes.
I'll get more quotes.
And let's get it done quickly, and, do we have, can we make an approval to approve this by her also?
Sure.
I make, I make, I make approval that we approve, a motion to approve Terry to order it, just,
call the President and Vice Pres for, approval. That be all right? To say the full long sign, the full long sentence.
Best word on the.
The best quote, yes.
That sounds good to me.
Yep.
Longer, just more detailed, yeah, more detailed option.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So is that a motion?
I second that.
Okay. And then, do we vote on it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. C, we've already done. Uh, D, which says C on mine, is. A motion to follow up with letters on complaints received.
Dan had requested that at the last meeting that we had.
Okay, I think it's done.
Remove that from the agenda.
Um, I don't, didn't we figure out we don't need motions to remove now?
Yeah, I don't think you ever did, and I don't know why you always did, but I always followed along, because Dan always liked to make that motion.
Well, we're, we're gonna.
I remember that.
Yeah, okay, well, we're not gonna do that anymore, we're just gonna remove them.
Nice.
Um, okay, yes, sir.
You need a motion to remove them if you haven't, um, completed them.
Addressed it.
You haven't addressed them, but what I think what she's talking about is after, in fact, making a motion and take it off after it's already been completed.
Yeah, it just falls, it's supposed to fall off.
I mean, if you voted on it and it passed, then it should fall off there, yeah.
Okay, we're done. Fourteen, new business, work order twenty twenty-four, oh, we already talked about that one. Revision B, revision of ordinance ninety-one ten.
We talked about that.
Okay. Fifteen, items from citizens. Anybody got anything? Everybody looks quiet, Joan?
Um, the twenty-second, we have the meeting where we did receive the brick IT grant, which is the technology one.
Good.
And we have a meeting on the twenty-second, and I guess we would need to know how many board members you want to attend, because then you need to put your notice up of the board.
So that is a Thursday, at what time, Joan?
Twenty-second, isn't that a Monday?
Twenty-second about July or August.
Sorry, honey, you're right, Monday.
My, my luck, I think it's eleven. And Jill is kinda preparing some packets for everybody to follow along with, so she also would need to know approximately how many to make.
Okay.
Where's this at?
Here at this office?
Yes, it's a Zoom meeting.
Zoom meeting, okay.
I'm gonna find it here in a minute, I hope.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to post the form, just in case, if you're interested?
We don't need a motion.
I may or may not, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll see.
No, just need to hand sign.
No, I'll just hang it.
Just post it.
Yeah, I'll post it out there, and that'll be on.
Okay, Monday, July twenty-second at eleven AM.
Okay.
And she has sent Jill the link.
Okay, thank you, Joan. All right. Any other public comment? Jerry?
Just kidding. Great meeting, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jerry. Okay, um, executive session, don't think we have any? Okay, we have nothing, trustee input. Anybody, Shanna?
I had something, it's gone.
It's gone, if you could get it back here in a minute, we'll come back to it. Donna?
Long meeting, time to go home.
Go home. Cal? Okay, Vicki. Okay, I do have something to say, and that is that, uh, Custer County is having a special meeting, Custer County Commissioners, are having a special meeting this Friday, um, it is. There it is. At two thirty to four o'clock, and it has to do with the, uh, Custer Fire District. So if anybody is interested in that, um, it is at the Commissioners Meeting Room in Custer County. I will not attend it, um, I normally do go to the Custer County Commissioners Meetings, but I will not be going. If anybody else would like to, um, feel free, and then you can give us a report on it. Other than that, I will apologize for the lateness of the meeting, I, I hope that they don't go like this very often.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
At nine twenty-three. Did I have a second?
Thirty-two seconds.
Second?
Sure.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.